Uh interruption disturbance or uh disruption of an official public meeting. Further, North Carolina law provides that it is a class two misdemeanor for any person to refuse to leave an official meeting upon being directed to do so. Pursuant to these authorities, anyone who interrupts, disrupts, or disturbs this meeting will be asked to leave. If they don't do not leave when asked, they will be removed and may be subject to address uh to arrest. As the Chair of this committee, I must remind all members of their duty under the under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflict of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. Seeing none, I'll ask Chris McClure to please call roll.
Chair Patel.
Here.
Vice Chair Turner. Mr. Bolick. Mr. Brenner. Ms. Evans. Mr. Cottis. Mr. Pryor.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a corn.
Thank you very much. Uh first item of business is to review and approve the open and closed session min uh minutes on the January seventeenth meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the open and closed minutes for January seventeen twenty twenty four? Negative second. Any discussion or debate? Hearing none, all in favor, please. Any opposed? Motion carries. The second item is the review and approval of the Audit Compliance and Risk Committee's uh charter and uh the Office of Internal Op uh Internal Audit Charter. Mr. Weber uh will present these tours.
And sharing update uh and and review of two charters. One is the uh Office of Internal Audit Charter and the other is the Audit Compliance and Risk Management Committee Charter. Uh both of those charters are instrumental in guiding the uh the work of this office and outlining the governance structure for that. Contained within your committee materials are copies of both the charters. Uh they show red line uh depiction of changes uh with text deletions and strike through font and additions shown in underline font. There are only minimal housekeeping changes this go around. Let's first address the Audit Compliance and Risk Management Committee Charter. Uh there's only one proposed enhancement and that's in section six uh D Internal Audit. And as uh most of you know, we recently had an external quality assurance review completed of our our office. And one of the verbal recommendations uh made during that review was to include this language uh within the charter as we review it this time. And the language states champion the internal audit function to enable it to fulfill the Institute of Internal Auditors' purpose of internal auditing and pursue the internal audit function strategy and objectives. That's the only proposed change for uh the committee charter. Now looking over to the uh Office of Internal Audit Charter. Here again, there's just a few changes. The first is a recommended change in section one uh the background. It's changing the title to eliminate the word authority and replace it with organizational reporting. Authority is actually fully addressed in section two of the charter, so it's kind of duplication it without in that regard. The other change is creating a new section B to highlight uh the specific uh additional bullet point. Within section two, purpose and authority, clarifying language is recommended to uh point seven. Uh quantifying the exact timeframe uh for an external review from periodically to once every five years. Section C one adds language to more fully encompass information access to include data, records, information, personnel, and physical properties necessary to carry out any audit engagement that we're assigned to complete. That highlights the changes for this go around. I do want to mention that the Institute of Internal Auditors uh has followed as and developed the professional standards. And that's what we're required to follow uh by state statute. Those have become outdated and in the past year and a half, they've done a considerable amount of effort in going back and looking at those standards, revising them and updating them. Uh and they've rebranded them the global standards. The global standards will go into effect in twenty twenty five, so the next time when we meet, there'll be some more probably substantial changes to reflect more holistically, the work that internal audit can provide to an organization through consulting, advising, and engagement as moving apart from the more structured approach that had been of the past decade. So just looking forward to that for for the next time we come. But happy to answer any questions if you have any related to the charters.
Any questions? No, then uh do I uh hear a motion to approve the revised charter? Second. Okay, and any discussion or debate? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, as have it, motion carries. The next item on our agenda is to review and approve the university's risk assessment and internal audit work plan for the fiscal year twenty twenty five. Mr. Weber.
Thank you. This is an exciting time for us because this document really outlines the roadmap and the plan for our work for the coming year. And it it, you know, it's a culmination of a lot of work that we'll talk about here, but it's really working through a risk assessment exercise to determine where we're placing our valuable internal audit resources. Uh the uh engagements and projects that we'll focus on over the course of the next year. So I just wanted to begin by highlighting uh the mission and vision statement of of our office. And the mission recognizes Carolina's position as a top leader in public higher education. And with that, it's very important for our office to to meet those same expectations in the level of work and quality of work that we carry out uh within our department. Our work is completed through accomplishing an independent proactive analysis of governance of operations, uh financial activities. And we look at many systems of internal controls and we work to ensure that risk is mitigated uh through these activities. Our vision is to be recognized as a trusted advisor. Uh we're a we're independent, thus our reporting relationship to this board in that we can provide independent and accountable, transparent work uh through the completion of our engagements. As you know, uh the international standards uh played an important role. We talked about that just a moment ago, but also the uh Carolina Article seventy nine, the Internal Audit Act. Both of those documents kind of highlight and and define compliance requirements of what we must do when we're developing a work plan. Those points are really highlighted on these slides within the blue uh font. But first of all, we need to develop a work plan that's based on a completed risk assessment. Uh we need to incorporate the expectations of senior management and the Board of Trustees and other stakeholders in the development of that document. And we need to communicate with the Board and executive leadership uh what we're here to do today to obtain approval of that plan. The also establish an internal audit plan to look at the safeguarding of public funds and assets. And lastly, to assess the operational compliance with federal and state laws. So that's our compliance component of the audits that we complete. The plan provides an itinerary for internal audit activity, delivering assurance to this committee and to the chancellor on the evaluation of internal controls through the completion of our work. Work plan preparation really here encompasses four key attributes. Uh evaluating risks really in a fluid environment, considering all aspects of risk uh potential impediments to us achieving our work. Uh the process incorporates a focus on potential impediments to the university and obtaining its priorities. And the planning process links audit work to key areas of university operations uh across this uh great and widely diverse university. Lastly, the planning process connects both system and university initiatives uh in our work plan engagement. So what does a risk assessment entail? Here, it's kind of broken out into four sections. The exercise is multi-step with results providing the necessary information to develop our work plan. The first phase encompasses information assembly and review of uh strategic planning materials. Those include um identifying the audit universe, what's everything that's in our scope of what we could be looking at, looking at the top five ERM institutional risks, the strategic plan of the university, uh the development of executive leadership survey for feedback, and a financial assessment of core operations. Phase two comprises an analysis of information including potential risk impediments to define university goals, uh impediments to our strategic plan, and uh any obstructions to regulatory and industry compliance risks. The third phase is where we go out and we solicit in solicit feedback from our stakeholders. This is completed through direct outreach to members of this committee, uh to senior leaders of the university, the vice chancellors, the chancellor's cabinet, and so forth. The final step is the work plan creation where project engage engagements are identified, uh and then the plan is reviewed and approved by this committee. A key point of our work plan is making sure our work aligns to support Carolina Next: Innovations for Public Good. Uh focus was placed on uh risk impediments for the plans three central priorities. And also this year, we incorporated the current transitional areas of focus highlighted uh by our interim chancellor uh on committees focused on enrollment planning, the fiscal master plan, applied science, and generative AI. Uh our work plan has fourteen engagements that are somehow linked back to supporting uh the overall mission of Carolina Next. This slide is uh shows a component of the university's leadership feedback when we're soliciting information through our discussions with leadership on risks that they see impacting the organization. And I thought it would best just to throw it up in a word art chart here and it kind of see that it's it's a vast and diverse lists of risks that were brought to the attention of of our team this year. They include cybersecurity, fiscal management, campus safety and training, there's fundraising, our physical infrastructure, burnout of faculty and staff, uh graduate student support, AI retention, and and the list goes on. Uh so I it's interesting to see, um you know, we're faced with many risks uh with the university of our size and scale. The presented work plan that we've developed uh contains uh eight work plans engagements to support leadership's uh identified risks as part of uh of the the work plan for next year. Supporting policy on university enterprise uh risk management. Uh we'll talk about this a little more in our informational presentation, but the Office of Internal Audit and the Vice Chancellor for Institutional Integrity and Risk Management uh is charged with employing a risk assessment process to determine the top five enterprise risks for the university that we report to the system office each year. Here's our output from this year. These will be presented up to the system office uh in uh early summer. Uh and you'll see they encompass risks associated with talent management, financial infrastructure, safety, and technology. And we have eight work plan engagements linked to supporting these risks. Lastly, an analysis of the financial magnitude uh of issues impacting the university is also considered. We looked at financial data for ten, kind of the core component units uh and expenses of the sixteen academic units uh for fiscal year ending twenty twenty three. Uh areas of high dollar and high volume transactions uh lead to increased risk. Uh so it's important that we are aware of those and consider that in our planning. Uh in this this year, uh there's uh four uh proposed engagements supporting financial magnitude assessment. And lastly, we um go out and we do an analysis of the higher ed landscape in general. Uh we reach out to Nakubo, Protivity, United Educators, Pritz Waterhouse, those are just a few. But we look at the work that they did in edu in in through their efforts to look at higher education risks. And then we come back and analyze those to see what of those risks identified would be relatable to risks that we have at UNC. And so we extrapolate that process in in our in our work as well. And so that we have ten and ten proposed engagements that link to the greater overall uh higher ed landscape. So here are the thirty one projects that comprise our plan. Uh there are ten operational, seven compliance, four financial, and four information technology audits. Additionally, we budget hours for six special projects as they arise during the course of the year. Our goal, of course, is to complete as many as we can a hundred percent, but we know this is a fluid document. Uh it's a plan and we project it now, but it could change during the course of the year. As we work through the year, any changes that are required within our plan, we bring back to this committee for uh approval and and consultation. Also, an important component of our work plan is the development of consideration of staffing available uh to complete this work as well as uh the budget uh financial budget necessary to do that. The Board of Trustees uh Audit Compliance and Risk Management Committee Charter requires approval and consultation with the chancellor on the budget and resources necessary to execute our plan. Uh the budget uh supports our complement of eight FTE. We're fully staffed right now, so we're in a good position. And working with the vice chancellor uh and our board chair and the chancellor, we've uh secured funds to uh meet our our operational needs for the coming year to execute the plan. So before considering a motion, uh any questions regarding this document, I'd be happy to address them.
Any questions uh for Dean? Okay, do I hear a motion uh to approve the twenty twenty five risk assessment and internal audit work plan? I get a second. Good second. Any discussion or debate?
Yes, I'm appreciative of that. And yes, we're at a good position right now with our staff of eight to meet the goals and and work of this plan.
Great. Um all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? No, as have it, motion carries. These items will be placed on the consent agenda for approval by the full board tomorrow. The next item, uh next agenda item is to hear a present, it's information only, to hear a presentation on the university's risk assessment and top five enterprise risk management exercise. Mr. Weber.
Thank you again. As indicated, this is an informational item that we wanted to share and socialize with the committee prior to our submitting uh the top five ERM risks to the system office in June. System policy thirteen hundred point seven establishes requirements for all constituent institutions of the UNC system to develop and maintain an effective uh risk management process that actually culminates in the reporting of our top five considered risks for the university back to the system office. They in turn take that, develop a holistic list of all the information submitted by institutions and and collectively, uh there's efforts and throughout the year to work on risk mitigation efforts surrounding that. Uh they define a risk at this from the system office as the possibility of an issue event or incident occurring and impacting the ability of the university to achieve its mission and strategic goals and objectives. Here at Carolina, the Enterprise Risk Management System is currently jointly managed by my team as well as uh the work of the Office of Institutional Integrity and Risk Management. Excuse me, here kind of depicts a timeline. It's kind of an extended process. It begins in December uh where we work to initiate a risk identification inventory. Uh we're developing an inventory of risk for the university. Uh this is done through compiled research and third-party assessment of of higher ed risks. Uh our office completes that uh each year. Then moving into February, uh my team developed a questionnaire that was distributed to the cabinet level officials and and to you, the Board of Trustees, as well to solicit feedback on the top risks. In March, we developed an electronic survey uh comprising primary risks identified through leadership's feedback and through the external landscape. And uh we distributed that uh and and got feedback that came in in April uh where the survey had been actually distributed to over five hundred university leaders. And uh the outcomes provided their opinion on risk impact and probability uh for those identified risks. In May, we socialized uh where we are today, we're socializing and identifying those presented findings to this committee. They've also been previously socialized uh internally within uh within university leadership. And then in June, I will submit the final report of the top five to the system office. And then we'll then begin initiating efforts internally uh to initiate processes to manage those risks and make sure that uh you know, we'll we'll assign some some task groups to hopefully work and develop uh you know, mitigation of risks. Uh and that's what we'll focus on throughout the year. We then are required to report back next year on our risk mitigation efforts for the risks that we identified this year. Evaluating the risk landscape, as we said, it it started off with third-party assessments. Uh but secondly, what we did is our both the Office of Internal Audit and uh arm uh collaborate in identifying, recognizing the outcomes of the survey results. And that's really important because it was collaborated effort between our shops and kind of taking uh some of the risks and and developing into the into the top five. So those top five are actually, in some cases, a combination of various different risk perspectives that were used to pull uh the overall top five together. There were forty potential enterprise risks. Uh we grouped them within ten risk categories. And when we asked respondents to rate them on likelihood of occurring and impact if the uh event does materialize on campus, actually, five hundred and fifty-two people received the survey. It was distributed to anyone at the university with a working title of director or above. Uh so that's the group that that we uh we solicited feedback from. And the survey was open for eight calendar days. When the survey results came back, we looked at it in several different categories. We looked at uh overall by risk category, what ranked high. We looked at those with who's what, who thinks what risks have the greatest likelihood of occurring based on feedback? The greatest uh probability uh uh of occurring? And if that happens, the impact associated with that. And then uh we used a uh form formula to determine overall risk score based on those attributes. The outcomes determined fourteen high, twenty-two medium, and four low scored risks out of the forty uh selected risks that we had developed. And and based on those forty, from our perspective, those were all high risk to begin with. And so then they whittled that down to uh to define the numbers that we have here at this point. Uh this uh is the results of our work from this year. Uh as you'll see, risk one focuses on talent management uh regarding attracting and maintaining a skilled workforce and includes managing shifts in the workforce associated with resignations, uh adaptive hybrid work schedules, and we're we're remote work options. Uh the second are financial risks uh associated uh or defined as related to successfully managing finances to keep pace with the growing personnel and operating expenses, recognizing the ability to address anticipated salary increases uh related to the big movement from S H R A to E H R A classifications for employees. Uh and um just looking at salary scales that had been quite frankly stagnant for for quite some time. Physical infrastructure risks, this supports risks associated with maintaining the physical infrastructure of the campus buildings and addressing safety, potential long-term health issues, ADA compliance issues, and meeting the academic and operational needs of the university with the facilities we currently have in place. The fourth one are looking, it's considered safety, campus safety. And this speaks to the management of building safety, including locks, cameras, and other technology applications designed to protect our campus. Lastly, our is the technology risk. And this encompasses risks associated with artificial intelligence, AI, uh potentially impacting information reliability, informational ethics, and the equitable implement implementation of new technology formats within our university. So uh that kind of provides a summary on that. Uh if there's any questions on those, be happy to address them. Yeah, good question. We were uh in the twenty percent range of our overall survey response. So uh for an anonymous survey, those are good results for the wide breadth that we casted for an eight-day open survey. Uh so the response rate was just around twenty percent.
And then how do you anticipate this work to intersect with the chancellor's task force, which touch at least three of these risks?
Yes. And and that's where we'll move forward in working in close collaboration with those task force groups and looking at and with the goal of hopefully next year, coming back to this committee and providing a feedback, a snapshot of what has done been done and occurred, kind of highlighting the achievements of of what risks we were able to mitigate. And those risks that are still outstanding and you know, just may not be able to be readily addressed. But you know, it's important to keep those on our on our working on our desk, on our desktop, when we're considering and working to mitigate those. So that's how I would see that occurring.
Thank you.
Wait.
Yes. No, as it was an anonymous survey, uh we did not capture it uh within the parameters associated with that. Yeah.
Anything else? Okay. Uh for the committee's consideration, we will adjourn without objection.
Thank you.
Review by this body. Every five years, there's a more substantive update that's the product of a five-year planning effort. This happens to be that that fifth year, so we've got some more substantive changes to go through today. Uh before I get into the transportation and parking, I would like to recognize Cheryl Stout. For those of you who do not know Cheryl Stout, she's the Executive Director for Parking. She's been at the, I think, sitting right behind me. She's been at the university for thirty-five years, has spent ten years as Executive Director. And if that's not enough, has stayed on here a little little extra service for us to get through this five-year plan, which again just goes to demonstrate the level of dedication that Cheryl has. What an incredible leader. She's been incredibly fiscally disciplined and really just a passion for operations and public service. So we are um very fortunate to have had her. There we go. So again, I mentioned uh every five years, a more intensive planning process. Here, you're looking at that visually. More than a year of work put into the process. Uh broad representation across campus participated in this process. And it also included the help of a consultant that that uh worked alongside us in terms of projections. We are now at that final stage, so all the way to the right, seeking approval for the ordinance. Again, a little more on this broad representation and participation at campus. Uh it's really reflected in that Advisory Committee for Transportation and the Executive Sponsor Group. These two groups comprised individuals from Human Resources, Chancellor's Office, Provost's Office, Student Affairs, Athletics, School of Medicine. It's part of ACT or the Advisory Committee for Transportation, included the Employee Forum, Faculty Council, Student Government, UNC Hospitals, Grad School. So again, very broad representation. Um and and again, I mentioned, we're at that third step there, so finally at the at the Board of Trustees review. So some some key initiatives, I won't go through all of these, but I do want to highlight a couple things. First, um in terms of areas of focus or or key initiatives, one fiscal and system accountability. One million dollars of savings in staffing is identified as part of this plan over the next five years to be executed. How often do we bring budgets in front of you with a five-year plan where you've got uh efficiency built in at that level? So again, a key component of this uh moving forward. We're going to talk some more in-depth about the pricing simplification, and I'll get into more detail on that. The other thing I'd highlight is just just some some focus on safety. Um up upgrading uh parking camera system complement to some of the other park of the camera upgrades we've had on campus there as. Upgrading parking camera system complement to some of the other park of the camera upgrades we've had on campus there as well, and that should help expand our coverage in that space. So as as part of, of course, underpinning the five-year plan is a is a financial plan and and some, what you're looking at is is one thing I do want to note is just doing a five-year plan is a best practice, actually doing a projection, going through this, thinking about key assumptions, how they change and what that means for the revenue, we need to operate the system. And I think that you're a really good job here. You can see some of the key variables or assumptions, taking into account inflation, talked about the staffing plan and staffing assumptions and expectations. There's some reduction in debt payment on the horizon. And then we also have, of course, some prioritization for for maintenance included in there. Again, I'm going to talk some more about the rate structures. That's a component of the revenue coming in and the finances of the five-year plan, kind of how it fits together. So getting into the rates and getting into by 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 area or group, key groups on campus. First, on the employee parking, I want to mention that we have taken board of trustee feedback seriously on this point. There's been a lot of concern about the cost of parking, especially for our lower salaried employees. I think we will go into some more detail on this in another slide. But a reduction to the the for employees making $70,000 or less is is part of this schedule moving forward, and we'll review some of that. Also, a big simplification. So we've gone from 72 price points down to 13. So again, a big simplification in how that's working. On the student parking side, and I'm going to spend more time on each of these, the employee and student. On students, again, you're going to see reduced costs generally and simplified pricing model going from 10 pricing points down to three. On events, we have really, this plan leverages events to pay a higher share of the overall cost of parking. And you'll see, again, this is also an area where there was some board of trustee feedback, and I think, you know, this this plan is responsive to that. You'll also note there's a higher ceiling, so we can we can get better, come closer to capturing the market value of of parking for events in campus. Visitors, slight increase for visitors on service permits, a slight decrease in service parking. All things together, though, the the aim, you can see the revenue impact on the far right. Generally, it's hovering around being flat. It's slightly up on net, but but generally, the idea was to try to be close to revenue neutral. So more on the employees. I mentioned the simplification, again, 72 price points down to 13. You can see those 13 price points in that table to the right. So if you if you look, you can see each of those and and an array by salary range as well. I do want to emphasize again, reductions for our lowest salaried employees, those under 70,000 seeing reductions. Some of them are seeing sizable reductions, so in the order of 20 to 50% decrease in their parking cost. There are, for those that are still concerned, I think about cost at that at that level, I do want to note a couple of things. One, there is a free transit option. Two, there is daily rates for those that are coming in frequently to campus. We try to expand the availability of that. Three, there's there's also a flat rate on just park and ride of what's equivalent to $200 parking ride. That is roughly $4 per week, so $4 per week, and that's spread over 24 pay periods. So to put that in context for where that is at the at the lower end of the spectrum. And again, I want to note, all of these changes are revenue neutral, which means with some of the savings there for for those salaries under 70,000, that means salaries above that are paying a higher amount, and so in some places, a pretty sizable increase. On the on the student permit side, again, I mentioned the the drop in pricing points and simplification from 10 to four. That that drop on the flat rate of $200, and so a slight reduction for student permit. And then lastly, again, want to note again, this is, this item does require approval by this body and happy to happy to address any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Knopfman. Is anybody having a question? Hey, look, North Carolina law and UNC system policy prohibit the willful interruption disturbance. You've already been warned. So I'm asking you to leave now. I'm asking you to leave now.
I'm two for two. I think it's me. I'm not allowed to present anymore. Yes.
Yeah. At this, yeah, we don't have our law enforcement folks in here. Anyway, when they come back, I may give them my opinion on situation because I think at this point arrests are in order. These 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 folks were warned about disrupting and and I am going to, because the rules say that the chairman of the committee is in charge of the room, I am going to ask that these folks be arrested and charged. Do we have law enforcement officer here? Could you, somebody from university police? Okay, well, when they come back, I'm going to ask that arrests be made. Trustee Cottis.
You know, it's it's really a shame because Vice Chancellor Knopfman was going over something we've been working on for a while, which is something that students have been advocating for, which is a reduction in parking fees. And we're now announcing that, and rather than hear that that topic, they're wanting to kind of shut it down instead. And we've also talked about explaining the concept of divestment and and how our funds work. And unfortunately, then they won't be able to hear that. So it just shows the need for the school civic life and leadership and dialogue because shouting like that, they're not going to be heard. And I would encourage them to take a different approach. Alan Johnson had a great op-ed piece talking about when he was an activist when he was younger and the research and the effort put into that. And I, you know, I would say current disruptions like this, I would call slacktivist because they're not putting the effort in that other activists do. And it's it's a shame because they could accomplish more if they took a different tact.
Thank you, trustee Cottis. So let's shift gears and get back to the parking ordinance. I had a couple of things that I wanted to ask about, but is there someone else that has anything that they would like to ask that's on the committee? Trustee White?
Yeah, a good question. So the idea, market value is going to depend on the event. But but we've had a ceiling of $20 per per space, and we feel increasingly in the market for special events, the the market would probably support a higher level. It's going to vary depending on the event. But for for example, last year, we had a big soccer match where where prices, you know, could support a little bit higher level than that, and we ran into some trouble where the ordinance and how it lined up with our ability to 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 increase parking there. So we're trying to make sure we can can come. Oh, I think it had been 20. I'm going to look.
So we had originally been charging 10 until this year. The maximum was 20. We actually are asking to move the maximum to 100 as part of this ordinance. And we had were charging this past year at basketball, about $20, which was the maximum we were allowed until this sort of change.
Right. And then on the next slide, proposed employee permit rates, you said there are three options, free transit, daily rates and the park and ride. So what's the difference between free transit and park and ride? Like, because you would pay to park and then ride the free park and ride. So what's the free transit option?
Free transit, it's just the, yeah, the the bus system where if you if you're able to get on fare free, that's, that's, yeah.
Trustee Cottis, Vice Chair Cottis.
Yeah, again, I really appreciate your work on this. I think it's a great system. We're effectively raising the cost for visitors to the system and for the event guests and providing savings for students and employees. And I think that's a great job.
That's right. Thanks.
Trustee Briner.
Perhaps it's my ignorance, but how does it work with respect to Rams Club parking? Does the university charge the Rams Club and they charge the donors, or is a transfer made for free?
It's it's a great question and one that we have historically not captured and and not really documented. And I'm going to give a lot of credit to Cheryl, who has who who has really taken this on and and really been able to to try to document how this works. I might ask her to to address this in a little bit more detail because I know you're a little closer to it.
There's a long history as it relates to the Rams Club. So transportation and parking terms and allocation over. We don't charge the Rams Club anything directly. We charge the pass-through cost for the event and we charge for public parking. And so we're not doing a direct charge to Rams Club for that event.
So we are just capturing the transient visitor to athletic events. We're not capturing the regular visitors in our revenue projections.
So we're we're just capturing what we currently have on the books for for the revenue projections for this five-year plan is, so what we're charging for currently. What I think this allows, though, I mean, it allows the vice chancellor to make decisions, operational decisions about how he wants to move forward with that and how he wants to structure that for the future. A lot of these things are historic. And so it just allows the vice chancellor to understand transparency, understand what he wants to do moving forward as it relates to those charges, those sort of intra-campus charges.
Thank you.
So Vice Chancellor Knopfman and Cheryl, to your to your point, actually, there are there are certain things in the general statutes that are specifically within the power and authority of this board. That is, traffic and transportation and parking on this campus actually are solely the responsibility of this board. And we we delegate that through this ordinance. And so last year, we made a substantive change to the parking ordinance that I'm looking forward to, and I'd like to hear the plan which goes to the point of the Rams Club athletic parking, and that is, is that all football and game day parking, that plan has to be approved by this board. And we haven't seen a plan yet for the coming season. So nobody, in my my opinion, would be that nobody's parking anywhere until this board approves a plan because that's what the ordinance states. And so I I want to know what the schedule on presenting that plan to the board is and 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 what that plan is going to look like, because I think there is, to your, to to the to the benefit of the finance office, you guys have worked really hard in trying to figure out how to capture the right amount of revenue. And so I think this board is, it would be my, you know, taking the temperature of this board, that we would want to assist you in any way we can to make that a positive thing. But but we did change the ordinance that says, you know, that 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 all of the this would be subject to approval pursuant to a plan approved by the board of trustees. So and that is in subset two of section 3.5 event parking. And for that matter, all event parking is subject to a plan approved by the board of trustees. So I'd like to hear some input on what that schedule is going to look like. Because, you know, we need to see, I'd like to see a plan. I think this board expects to see a plan.
So I appreciate that comment. I you, I think the board did provide clear direction on wanting better handle on how events are managed, how that parking is priced and where the revenue flows. And that's, again, I'm going to give Cheryl and a team a lot of credit. We've moved the ball down the field. We're not quite there, but we we have started to really document what this looks like. We can certainly engage the this body more as we get closer to to the season and what that looks like in terms of, you know, what the pricing would look like and and how that and how the the revenue will flow.
Yeah, I just think what what we really want is to see a plan and how that works between the contemplation, as I recall, was what the plan looks like with with Director Cunningham's office, working with the Rams Club and what that plan looks like. And and the idea was that there would there would probably be some folks that sit around the table and and kind of have a discussion. And that, I think, is where trustee Briner was going with his comments, so that we could get some clarity on the partnership that exists between the Rams Club and the athletics department and all the stakeholders with with respect to event parking. Because as Chair Pryor and I were were informed, I mean, I I the the soccer match that occurred last summer and the and and that was one of the things that precipitated the change in the in the first part where we have concerts, other events pursuant to a plan approved by the board, that there was a lot of, it appeared to me, and again, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm just given my observation, that there was a lot of confusion and and not a lot of pre-planning with respect to to parking. And I'm not sure that we captured the revenue that we could have captured for what was one of the premier events in Kena Stadium's history. Is that a fair statement, Chair Pryor?
No, I we've we have certainly, we have that in mind as we approach the summer and another event. So I I think there's every effort is going to be made to ensure that we're 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 better coordinated on on how that will be run.
I do have another question. Why on on your on the reorganization of the service parking, can you describe what service park? I mean, is that is that an internal accounting? Is that our internal service teams that use the service parking? Or are these contractors that use service parking? Because if it's primarily outside contractors, I I have a question as to why that revenue projection would be negative moving forward as opposed to positive. Now, if it's internal service vehicles that were just billing to, you know, going that that's paper, paper dollars, so to speak, where we're internally billing other departments, that's a different story. But if it's outside contractors, it seems to me we could we we could capitalize on service parking with respect to buy and through their contract with the university to do work on campus. Could you help clarify that?
Sure. So the service parking, again, the approach was to some simplification of the pricing structure. The service contractors typically charge that back to university department. So it's still almost an intra-campus transfer. If we charge $750 for a permit, they're going to charge the unit that is utilizing that service, and they're going to charge it back to the unit. So it still is somewhat of a university intra-campus charge because it does go back. All of our construction projects, if we charge a contractor for lay-down and staging area, it gets charged right back to the project and it gets circled back through to other university units. So just that marginal amount of revenue and the simplification that it brings for all of the different service costs, it seemed worth the differential in the revenue just for that simplification. And it is a charge back to the units.
Yeah.
Almost always.
Yeah, that that's helpful. I'm just wondering if we if 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 there couldn't be at least a contemplation of if you are going to contract with the university, that one of the prerequisites for contracting with the university is is that you pay a certain fee that doesn't get billed back to the university with respect to the the privilege of being able to contract with the university.
Yeah, I mean, in practice, that'd be, it'd be it'd be difficult to achieve because I think they would bill us probably.
I got it. That that makes sense. That's why I asked. Trustee Cottis.
Yeah, I don't think I realized that there were certain groups that didn't fund backend parking. So just to make sure I heard it right. So Rams Club does not then pay for the parking? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
So Rams Club, I think we charge athletics directly for the pass-through cost and some of the parking space cost. And and I I would defer to obviously the AD Athletic Director, but I think that's billed then to the Rams Club. I'm not certain, but I'm assuming that athletics would not pay that, but that's. I'm, I'm not certain, but I'm assuming that athletics would not pay that, but that's billed back. We just don't build the Rams Club directly. We build through athletics.
Parking is a membership benefit that the Rams Club members get their membership levels.
Okay. But Rams Club doesn't pay the. Okay.
The services provided that day pay for the cost.
All right. So it's flowing back out of the athletics budget, not out of the Rams Club budget. Well, we might want to look at changing that because that would seem like a, a bucket of funds that could help, um, stem any shortfalls in athletics. If athletics is not having to pay for that, but Rams Club effectively pays that directly.
To your, to your point, trustee Codis, that was the contemplation of the ordinance change to have a plan that would be approved by the Board of Trustees. So we could take a look at that.
Are there other groups like that that?
Well, I think one of the challenges is as we allocate permits for an event, our, our charge is only at that dollar level. If it was 10 in the past or $20 per event, but if the market value's above that, y- you're, you're, you're really not capturing that at any point in time, right? So we, you, you, there's a, there's a pricing component and there's in that allocation, there's a, you know, I, I think every group pays that amount, although I guess I'd defer, Cheryl, are there groups when we allocate out the, the permits that are not paying the 10 to $20 that we charge?
Or really for those types of events, we basically athletics is the customer. I mean, so we, we do public parking, which transportation parking is managing those public parking lots. But basically any of the allotted parking goes directly, um, goes directly through athletics and is managed through athletics in terms of assignment process with the Rams Club and that kind of thing. I mean, the Rams Club has that allocation, but we really athletics is our customer.
Yeah, that, that might be a, a good audit type item to, to look into or, or just an internal review. Wouldn't necessarily have to involve Dean's team. It could just be an operational review.
Well, I totally agree. And that's why it says that the, uh, that you would, you allocate these permits issued by the Carolina Athletics and the department pursuant to a plan approved by the Board of Trustees. So I would say in the review of that plan, that would be a first step for us to be able to take a look at that.
And I, and I do want to make sure, we are working on that. So I, I, I think we've, we've, we've started with, with basketball. Where we've moved into football now, trying to document, um, and we'd be happy to, to follow up and share some more, more detailed information on this piece about the allocation per event, where the charges are, the total dollars and how we price currently. And then what might be available if we were to shift that model moving forward.
Yeah, that's great. A lot of confidence in you, trustee Kanaupan. Now I got another question and that is about the, oh, I'm sorry, Chair Pryor.
Go ahead.
So my question is about the parking ride.
Yes.
So I'm assuming that the parking ride is the bus system that is funded three ways. Is that correct? We fund it, the town of Chapel Hill funds it, who else funds it? There's another entity. Am I right about that?
Carboro.
Carboro. Yeah. So town of Carboro, town of Chapel Hill and the university system fund this bus system. So, you know, I, I'm just going to say this because it's, it's one of the things that hovers in this room over the last couple of weeks. The lack of cooperation that this university has experienced from the town of Chapel Hill, and for that matter, the town of Carboro is appalling. And, and, and we need to seriously think about our financial partnerships with the town of Chapel Hill. If they are, for example, in the public safety arena, are not going to come to the aid of our university police department who work really, really hard to protect students, who by the way, are citizens of the town of Chapel Hill as a result of being here. And, 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 you know, I, I think, you know, moving forward, we need to be really tough in negotiations with the town on this. I, I, Chair Pryor, do you want to say anything to that as well?
That's a good segue to my question, which was, I just want to confirm, does the university get any benefit of the revenue from parking on Franklin Street from the meters and the pay to park lots? So currently we don't get any of that benefit.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, is that, is that something that's negotiated on an annual basis or is this something that is, that is, I, I mean, look, it clearly benefits the town. It clearly benefits the university. Okay. To have a joint bus system, because we've got students that live off campus. They got to be able to come in and out. I get that. But, but I mean, what, what, what's our schedule on that? How does that work? I know it's a little bit off topic, but, but it's, but it's relevant to this board.
Well, there's a partners group that has representatives from the town, town of Carboro and, and UNC Chapel Hill. And e- each year they go through a process setting that price. Um, and, and you're right to point out, there are some, there's some key service level and delivery. We've, we've worked really hard to clarify what service levels are expected as part of that. And, and we've, we've formalized that it, it had worked very informally in the past. I'll give Cheryl and, and Gordon a lot of credit for w- w- working this into an actual contract and an MOU with service level expectations. As we went through the pandemic, that really, the, the need for that, um, became very clear. And so, uh, I, I, I think, but yeah, there's a, there's a conversation about that. There's much better ability to also to see the, the dollars involved in the system in aggregate. And then also what happens if for even if there's excess in a given year, how that's allocated for capital. And so we're, we're able, we do participate in that process each year.
Anybody else? Trustee Codis.
I think you bring up a great point, which is maybe we should look at kind of an all relationship budget with the, um, town of Chapel Hill and Carboro to understand all the financial implications of our relationship and revisit those. Look at those and see if we're being treated fairly or not. Um, and perhaps remind them of the financial implications of, uh, actions.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to the, oh, oh, wait a minute. We do need a, a motion to approve the ordinance. Do we have a motion to approve the ordinance? Have a motion from Vice Chair Codis and a second from Chair Pryor. All those in favor, oh, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. A motion passes. Next item on business is, uh, the approval of two requests for advanced planning spending authority for the gene therapy center renovation in the Columbia Street steam tunnel replacement. Associate Vice Chancellor Halsey is here to present those items. Ms. Halsey, hey, welcome. Thank you.
Good afternoon, sir. Uh, thank you for allowing me to address you on several items today. We do have those two requests for advanced planning spending authority. The first item is for renovation to 4,000 square feet of space in the Thurston Bowls to support the gene therapy center. Uh, this project will update a portion of the seventh floor research spaces completed in the early 1990s. School of Medicine has committed funding for this renovation as part of a recruitment for a new center director who starts this summer. Uh, the second request is for critical repairs to 1,700 feet of steam tunnel. It's specifically the section that goes from South Columbia Street to the main campus artery. Um, as you may recall, we recently completed an emergency repair project to another section of the tunnel, um, which had actually collapsed. And that project sort of highlighted the fragile state of our whole tunnel system. Um, so that's the, those are the two advanced planning requests.
Great. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay. Thank you. Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the request? I have a motion from Chair Pryor. Do I have a second? I have a second from trustee Patel. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Halsey. Uh, I think you have the next item as well.
I do, sir.
Which is, uh, review three proposed, uh, designer selections. Frank Porter Graham Student Union North Roof Replacement, Phillips Hall 1960 Building Window Replacement, Brower Hall Fire Alarm System Replacement. Ms. Halsey.
Sure. Uh, so we've discussed most of these projects prior, but I would like to start with the roof project. We're moving forward with designer selection. Student fees will be used to fund this project. Our first choice in firms, Terricon, is providing the engineering services for our ongoing memorial roof project. So they are familiar with UNC. And they also are providing similar service to ECU on one of their roofs. I know that roofs can be a, a touchy subject, but I wanted to point out that we do have over $60 million in maintenance on roofs alone in our deferred maintenance backlog. Um, so in the future, what I'd like to, uh, work on with, uh, your help and the, uh, system office is a design build for our next roof project. So we can really see how the metrics work on design build versus the, the traditional design bid build.
I'm totally in favor of that. We've, we've had that discussion now, at least for the four plus years I've been on the board.
We are currently doing a design, uh, build on an elevator, but I think with roofing, it really lends itself to that, um, style of contracting. So. Uh, the next designer selection is for, um, Phillips Hall windows. These are windows that go back to the 1960s. Again, this will be funded with state R and R, um, and it's, it's a really necessary project. And then the last one, also funded by state R and R, and we're going to move forward with the fire alarm control panel at Brower Hall. We have over $71 million in backlog on fire safety systems alone. And some of these buildings, when the fire panels fail, um, we just can't even find the parts because the systems are so old. So that, that takes time. Um, and then we, um, usually have to post a fire watch in order to allow the buildings to be used, which isn't another additional cost. So I would argue some of these fire alarm projects are kind of our most critical for safety as well as financial. That's all I have today.
Great. Thank you, trustee Codis.
I say all of this is music to my ears and it's, uh, it's nice to sit here and be smiling. And I also note and would appreciate and appreciate the fact that the firm selection process, uh, language has changed to make sure it's in compliance with our non-discrimination ordinance. So, um, great job.
Thanks, sir.
One comment. Make sure you reserve one of those window panels in Phillips Hall for, uh, Provost Clemens.
Though there's plenty of old ones coming out, so we can do that. Thank you.
Well, yeah. And so do I have a motion to approve? I have a, a motion from Vice Chair Codis and a second from trustee Patel. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you. It passes. Thank you, Ms. Halsey, and, uh, such a pleasure to have you here. Thank you for, uh, taking the assignment and, and, uh, your willingness to come here to Chapel Hill and help us, uh, on campus. All right. Last item of business is my favorite item on the agenda, the Gimco Castle easement. Uh, Associate Vice Chancellor Merklin is here to present the item. Mr. Merklin?
Thank you. Uh, we're back with a little more information. Um, so just a little more background on the, on the request. Uh, in 1975, the, uh, what was then called the Junior Order of the Gimco donated to the UNC, the 27 acres. That's the area that's highlighted in the blue box that has the donated land. They carved out the 2.15 acres for themselves. And carving out there at acreage, obviously they created the donut. And so at the time, uh, they asked for and received an ingress and egress easement. The land is all now part and operated along with, by the botanical gardens. It's all part of, of, of Battle Park. So the land that they donated does, it, you know, is extensively used with the trail system, et cetera, and, and is managed, actively managed by the, the, uh, BOT garden as well. Um, and then we were also asked for the organization. So also provided here is the list of their current, um, officers, um, to the organization. This request came when they asked to, or when they, when they had repairs in addition to the castle that they wanted to make. When they were doing this, they realized that the, uh, electrical, that the, the water, uh, the teledata and the electrical line, there were no easements in place for them. So they were crossing the land. They were not in that existing easement right away. So instead of asking for an easement in place where they currently are, where no easement exist, they came to us and said, we would like to put those utilities within the existing easement for ingress and egress. However, the language only allowed ingress and egress, and ingress and egress. So what they have asked us is to expand the language of the existing easement, which is the roadway coming in, that they can then utilize that for all their utilities. Um, and so then they would be abandoning the, uh, power line, which is above head power line and the water line and placing those within, as well as adding data and placing those within that exist, existing easement right away. And so our request to you is to update the language of that easement that a lot currently only allows ingress and egress to allow these other uses, um, for which there is no existing easement for anyway.
Thank you for the thorough explanation because I really think that was, that, that, that really helps to illustrate exactly what it is that we're asked to approve. So I appreciate your work on that. Um, anybody have any questions or discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve? Oh, I'm sorry. A motion from trustee Blaine to approve?
I, I don't need to provide any commentary. This one seems to me almost as easy as approving a new roof.
It is. It is. But.
And, 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 and that, uh, they gave us all this property and they just need an easement. I mean.
But, but what I really appreciate is the detail.
I'll truncate that discussion and move approval.
I appreciate, I appreciate the detail with which was given. So we know exactly what's going on. That, so it was really good. So I have a motion from trustee Blaine. Do I have a second? I see it from trustee Briner. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, um, that covers the agenda. So we will, without objection, we will adjourn, uh, the budget finance and infrastructure. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. 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 I have a motion to put those items on the consent agenda for the full board meeting. I have a motion from trustee Briner and a second from Vice Chair Codis. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Great. We'll put those on the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. McClure. Yes.
Fantastic effort from, uh, facilities and, uh, around commencement. And, um, just wanted to appreciate their efforts on that. But also there were some costs that were incurred because of vandalism. And I think it's important that we, um, identify those costs and seek to recover them financially so that it, those costs don't impact our budget and we have a chance to recover that. I saw probably 20 people out cleaning up the red paint off the building and some of the damage there. And we need to figure out not only the, the cost of our repair, but the damage to the building so that we can pursue those costs.
In my line, to your point, in my line of work, you, you bill the person who causes the damage.
Right. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah. So it would, it would, we would go after them in a civil action.
Yeah. So I mean, yeah, I agree. And if it's, if it's, if it's sponsored by a student organization, we should bill the student organization. Yes, sir, trustee Briner.
As a more general matter on this topic, uh, I wonder if it behooves us to encourage lawful protest by agreeing to cover the costs of incremental security required for lawful protests and billing for unlawful protests in general, not just damages, but also personnel costs that we are bearing of substance. I don't know the legality of that. I don't know the complications that provides, but, uh, we do need to be in a position of encouraging lawful protest and discouraging unlawful protest. And that is one more way to do it.
Yeah, I think there's precedent for that where, like, for instance, if someone goes off the coast and they have to be rescued, the cost of the rescue operation is charged to the, uh, the person that needed that. So.
Yeah, that's maritime law, which is really.
But there's probably something along that.
I've done some of that. That's, all right. Great. We're adjourned. Thank you.
I would like to welcome everyone to the May meeting of the University Affairs Committee. As chair of this committee, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflicts of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. Seeing none, I'll ask Chris McClure to please call the roll.
Chair Jones?
Here.
Vice chair Evans. Mr. Ballantyne. Mr. Bolick. Mr. Bryan. Mr. Kalapa. Mr. Patel. Mr. Pryor. Ms. Taylor. Mr. Turner. Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. Our first item of business is to review and approve the open and closed minutes of the March 27, 2024 meeting. Does anyone have a chance to review those minutes? If so, may I have a motion, please, to approve the open and closed minutes of the March 27, 2024 meeting? May I get a second? Any discussion, debate? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Before going into the, the vice chancellor Manguini's discussion, I would like to say a couple of things about what's occurred on campus here recently. The Carolina community has experienced significant tumult over the past several months. Carolina is strong enough to willingly provide a neutral forum for tough discussions from all viewpoints to occur. We should be proud our institution has the courage to act in this fashion. There have, however, been excesses in the manner in which these discussions have taken place, and these excesses must be addressed. Academic freedom for both students and faculty is not a license to disregard either the law or university policy. Civil society is maintained by the just and consistent application of the rules. While discretion is important, selectively picking and choosing the rules we follow and those we disregard lies atop a very slippery slope. No group has either the right or the authority to compel anyone to take a position on any given issue. The individual always retains the right to either engage or not engage on issues as they see fit. To quote Marcus Aurelius, "You always own the option of having no opinion." The right to freely assemble and share ideas is unquestioned. These rights end where others begin. Our students have a right to pursue their educational goals, our faculty have a right to pursue their research and to teach our students, and our administrators and staff have the right to perform their duties, all without fear of harassment, intimidation, or violence. Institutional neutrality is critical for the university to remain a forum for free and ideally respectful discussion. Institutional neutrality includes investment decisions. Our endowment is managed by professionals looking to maximize the return on our investments for the betterment of our students and ultimately our society. The management of UNC's endowment will not be politicized. The Carolina community should always seek to elevate, not diminish, the level of debate. Our fellow citizens, the people who own this university, expect this of us. This elevation is one of the responsibilities we must bear in order to enjoy the privilege of pursuing truth and freedom in such a wonderful place. Frankly, some of the behavior seen over the past several months is beneath the expectation level we set for ourselves. Bullhorns, spray paint, vandalism, trespassing, disrupting classrooms, meeting, and the issuance of grades, using anti-Semitic, invective, conveying threats, and generally attempting to prevent our graduates and their families from celebrating this past weekend likely did more harm than good if the goal was to garner support for the Palestinian people, so much so that one must ask if these actions were intended to persuade or merely enrage. I would encourage people, regardless of their particular cause, to consider these hard-learned lessons as we continue providing a neutral forum to discuss challenging societal issues. With that, I would like to invite vice chancellor Manguini.
Quick comment on that. One point that you made regarding bullhorns, I was observing that, we've all observed that. And I was speaking with Chief Baker from Charlotte, and he said, in Charlotte, that's not permitted, that's actually a violation of university policy and state law, and it's an actionable offense. And I think we need to start enforcing... And I think we need to start enforcing that because that interrupts activities. It's a, you know, we saw that at commencement. A lot of people having to hear that noise. If they want to use their voice, it's fine, but amplified voice is not, because then it just becomes who can shout the loudest and who can use the most bullhorns, and that's not any way to run a university.
Trustee Kotis, thank you. I'm not the expert on this, but my understanding is that there's an aggregate noise level that's permitted, whether it's amplified or not. And you have to stay below that noise level regardless of whether you're using a bullhorn or anything else. And when we had the protests, the encampment that that ended on April 30, that was one of the policies that the protesters had been complying with along with the with the structures' policy that then they stopped complying with. So again, just a point of clarification on what I am told is how the noise ordinance is enforced.
So perhaps we could look into that a little bit further and then make sure we're enforcing that standard. I also observed people taking a bullhorn and yelling only three feet away from someone, and that could cause hearing damage. And so I think that's clearly assault when you do that. So perhaps we could explore both those items.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Bryan.
Yeah, I just was gonna follow up. Appreciate your comments. Think you articulated them well, and I think those two words, you know, elevate and persuade stood out to me. And I'm thinking about new students coming in, and I'm sure we'll hear from Vice Chancellor Feldman at some point about the great new students we'll be getting for next fall. But I just think it's a great opportunity for us to think about as our new students come in, are we helping them elevate their conversation and work on persuading others as opposed to some of the other tactics that we've seen? I just think it's a great opportunity for us. I appreciate the comments.
Likewise, thank you very much for what you said. That was very well done.
Well, some things need to be said. Our next item of business is to review and approve revised faculty salary ranges for the School of Information and Library Science. Vice Chancellor Becky Manguini is here to present this. Dr. Manguini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As always, it's nice to be before you all today. I have one matter rather different from what we just discussed before you today, and it's another update, as Chair Jones said, to faculty salary ranges. The School for Library and Information Sciences last updated their ranges three years ago, and they seek to leverage some new data from the Taubé Survey, which provides benchmarks from the Computing Research Association for Library Science roles. The new proposed ranges target the 75th percentile for the midpoint for instructors, lecturers, and associate professors, and the 50th percentile for full professors. These numbers provide a small shift in their existing ranges, but enough that the school believes that they will drive excellence and help SIL remain competitive in recruiting and retaining talent. The methodology used to determine these ranges is indeed sound. We have looked at it, and it is in line with the provisions for faculty salaries as set forth by the UNC System Office. Absent any questions, I seek your approval on this item and invite you to consider adding it to tomorrow's consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Trustee Bolick.
Vice Chancellor Manguini, what is the Taubé Survey?
So every one of our schools and units uses a series of data sources to determine their competitor salary ranges. As the lawyers in the room will tell you, we have a a series of requirements that we can't just call Duke and say, "What do you pay your folks?" But we have tools that we can leverage that are these broader surveys run by outside folks that help us assess salaries. We use a couple of standard ones, the AAUDE, which looks at a number of fields. And then there are some particular fields like Library Science or the School of Medicine, where they have very specific ones based on the interest area. The Taubé Survey comes out of the University of Georgia, and it's sort of an affiliate of the University of Georgia, and they work with an outside consultant to pursue library science salaries and research computing. So the folks in the School for Data Science and Society also leverage some of the Taubé survey information.
Trustee Kotis.
You know, we just went through the budget, and we were looking at cost drivers out there, and one of the largest cost drivers is salaries. And this approach of kind of keeping up with the Joneses and staying in the 75th percentile, not everybody can do that because you're always gonna have, as you increase, then that increases the range for someone else and continues to go up. So I do think that deserves a thorough review, but also looking at the actual dollar amount of these changes. So when we approve a policy change, how is that going to affect the budget? And what does that mean for that department? Because a lot of these costs are fixed costs with tenured employees, and so and so it's a recurring cost, and we don't really know the number. Do we have a sense of what the number is for this? Because it feels like there needs to be maybe some coordination between the different areas of the university and the ABC, I mean VC, Knufman, to look at the financial implications of each one of these decisions that we're making along the way. I'd love to have a ballpark for all of the decisions that we make and say, "Okay, here's the this month, we're approving this much cost." And then where's it gonna come out? Where are we gonna cut to recover that? And I thought the parking presentation made a lot of sense. Do we know how much this change will cost?
It's a totally fair question, and I just want to be very clear. This is, these are ranges. Nobody's salary is being adjusted as a result of the range approvals. What we basically do in looking at the ranges is we're essentially aging the ranges that we've had historically for faculty and lining them up roughly with the standard state increase. So the Taubé Survey, where it put us, gave us, we, from the three years ago, acknowledged the 4% we received last year and will include the 3% we're receiving this year, and allows us to then set salaries based on these ranges. So there's a little bit of wiggle room. I'm not gonna lie and say it's exactly that amount adjustment, not quite 7%, but it, what we do is look at the old ranges, compare them to see where we are. We're not making dramatic shifts, saying we're now gonna be up with a much bigger number. And you'll notice, I know you particularly made a comment at one of the last meetings that we weren't looking at the adjuncts and the instructors. They're at the 75th percentile in this one, and the full professors are at the 50th percentile, really with an intention of sort of level-setting some of that. But the impact initially is essentially zero. It's until we start trying to move people along a continuum, and we've been working with Nate Schop pretty closely to sort of look at, how do we look at faculty salary data overall? I know Chair Pryor had a question about faculty salaries. We've been looking into where do we sit compared to our peers in general? And how has that changed over the last decade or decade and a half? And what are our plans moving forward? That is part of the long, ongoing conversation we're having with Nate and with the schools about as you plan for faculty salary adjustments moving forward, that has to be part of a much bigger conversation. The ranges, however, we're sort of tempering them, but also giving them enough room so that they're not tied to three years ago ranges in bringing in people now. They can bring them in closer to where the other people would be. So we're not actually creating any space where people who are currently working here don't fit within the ranges.
Okay, so a couple of questions. One, if the minimum changes and someone's below that minimum, would that not impact that?
Generally, we don't move until we have a reason to make a movement. So if we bring in somebody new, then sometimes there is an effort to bring them closer, but not automatically.
And then secondly, we saw this with the Business School with the 2U model. How do we calculate in this what people are making in terms of the base salary plus additional revenue from other sources? Where they're paid supplemental or they're paid grants or different things that may elevate their salary, but it's not reflected in the base salary? Because I think there's a NNO report that was talking about some of the numbers where it was 160 maybe base, but it was 380 when you looked at the full amount paid to them.
Yeah, that's a fair question. It's a, that is one that we've worked pretty hard, and I can probably turn to Nate and his and some of the independent contractor pieces and looking at how we measure, historically in Kenan Flagler, which I think was where the issue had come up. They were allowing, having, the structure was set up, so they were having some folks hired as independent contractors as opposed to full positions here and then doing consulting as a percentage of their role, which they're allowed to do, but it has to be documented. That has been reined back in, and we've cleaned that up as far as I know. So we're not seeing that level of things. Now, the NNO, it's true, they're reporting notes, base salary, and there are places on campus where there are administrative supplements for additional duties such as a vice provost in the provost office. You may have a faculty member who then has a supplement for permanent positions that shows up in the total salary. For positions that are shorter, shorter term, it might not always. So a department chair that's in a short-term role, it may not show up. That is certainly something, though, that we provide upon request.
I have another question, Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Bolick.
Okay. So Vice Chancellor Manguini, and you've done a great job of informing the board, particularly when tenure hires are brought to us. But I'd still, I still have a lingering question with respect to the unfunded liabilities that are generated by creating professorships. And, you know, because, you know, employees of the university contribute to their retirement and contribute to their current healthcare. But once they, once they have been here five years, they're gonna be eligible for Medicare Supplement Help after they go on Medicare. And they're also gonna be vested in the state retirement system. And that's, those are long-term liabilities that the university carries on our balance sheet. To Trustee Kotis's point about the supplemental income, and I've had questions about this of how that unfunded liability is calculated. Is, are some of these outside sources, for example, the 2U money, is that counted toward our professors' retirement? Or is it simply the base salary? How is that calculated? Because it's, it's just, I mean, I think the cap is two, is it 200? You would know, Trustee Bryan, or is it 220 now? Is that the max? It's something, it's like 220 is the max. Just curious.
The amount that is figured is my understanding, and I'm turning to Nate, and we're both sort of checking it. But my understanding is that the way retirement is, the numbers that retirement is factored off of are university pay alone.
Okay.
And then if they're receiving outside money as an independent contractor, they would then have to be taxed and pay the various pieces there. But that is, we do not bring in money that, or we're not counting in their total figure money from an outside source. Yeah.
Right. I didn't, I didn't think so. I was just curious as to make sure we're not. And it would be helpful, I think, as new hires are brought in, if there could be sort of a projection or a notation of what our anticipated unfunded liabilities are moving forward. I don't know, Trustee Bryan, or you may have some information on that.
At the risk of going way down a rabbit hole that no one else is really interested in but you and me, the way that it works is there's what's called an employer contribution made on behalf of every current employee that satisfies all future unfunded liabilities. So the university itself will not carry an unfunded liability. Right now, we're paying 19.4%, I believe, is the employer contribution. And so the act of hiring a new employee triggers a current charge of 19.4%, but no future liability beyond their tenure here. That gets absorbed by all of the state employees across the state.
Right, yeah, I understand that. I'm just, I know that we have a balance on that that you keep, Nate, right? There's a paper balance, like a figure that you keep that's running. Just for accounting purposes. Thanks.
And there is a difference between those who are enrolled in teasers and those who are enrolled in the optional retirement program. And to your point earlier about after-retirement expenses, as of January 1 of 2024, new employees hired are no longer eligible for retiree benefits.
Trustee Bryan.
Back to the salary ranges. If the salary, moving them to the midpoint puts this out of budget, what happens? What's the plan? And how does that work?
So probably it's useful to have a little bit of a discussion about how new faculty are hired. So the School for Library and Information Sciences can't just say, "We're gonna hire six new faculty" and just do it of their own volition. That is written into their budget plans that are approved and that are ultimately what you see. The provost knows about those hires, and then they have to go through the whole process. So we're doing a series of checks and balances, and then as they come through our shop, before a hire is made, we have to be able to demonstrate that you can account, that you have the financials for them before a hire is made. So there are, I think, four different checks at which point, before we're hiring a faculty member, that would put us in concern here. Ranges are generally quite big, such that we can manage an outlier. If we've got a National Academies member who is a world-renowned in their field, that it's really phenomenal for us to get them. There's sometimes the one person who's towards the top of the range. But as in all hiring, generally, there is a bell curve, and most people sit towards the center. And so we're watching that in a series of ways, and my colleagues in the provost's office spend a lot of time paying attention to faculty salaries and faculty hires because we know that every time we make an adjustment, whether it's a retention or we have that outstanding scholar, that everybody else is paying attention. So we have to level set. So we have those conversations as the part of, as part of hiring someone or as someone departs, are we bringing them in at the same, the next person in at the same level? Are we making some adjustments? So I can't say that there's a single point, but there are several points so that we can ensure that we're not seeing a surprise in coming to you next year saying, "We hired 122 new faculty members, and we don't have the money for it."
Trustee Bryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Vice Chancellor Manguini, how many faculty are in this department total, do you mean?
In SILS, I believe it's a 20, right now, there's 22 faculty in this.
And maybe I'm asking a I guess I don't know, how do we know what departments have planned growth or what numbers of people we're talking about?
So some of that comes out of the budget process, so we spend some time talking about it. There's also, right now, Interim Chancellor Roberts has put together this enrollment growth strategy. So we've been talking, or strategy group, we've been talking a lot about where we might grow. All of those things are sort of a build-out multiple years. We don't generally hire faculty. We don't decide now and hire someone by July. This is a longer range. We want to grow to meet the demand. We're watching our enrollment numbers. We're seeing that there's a lot of demand on the computer science side of things, or we're seeing that there's not as much interest in this sort of thing. So how do we make adjustments over time? That's sort of the way that works. So whether you know that in this moment, I don't know, but the, I can't say. But the ranges are intended for us to be able to make the pivots that have been, they're sort of the last step to this longer-range planning. Yeah. And I will note that I have brought a lot of these before you. We are running to the bottom of the list of faculty salary updates. I grew a little bit anxious by the number of them I've been bringing before you and went back to the team and said, "How close are we?" And we are nearing the end of the list of those that are coming before you.
I'm disappointed to hear that.
Oh, I'll bring plenty of other stuff. Don't worry.
Representative Jones, or former Representative Jones, current trustee Jones.
Trustee Bryan.
I've only been here a short period of time. Have you ever brought, and this is a somewhat tongue-in-cheek question, a reduction in salary range based on research?
I have.
Okay.
I have.
That surprises me, and I'm happy to hear that.
I've brought some, both for the law school, where we, the ranges were quite big, and we narrowed them to so that we weren't giving any, any suggestion that you had the option to get a salary at this level. And I want to say maybe Global, or Gilling School of Global Public Health may have been the other one.
So my tongue went from my cheek down my throat, and I'm gonna hush.
That means I'm doing my job.
Any other questions?
In
In, in the sort of extra above ordinary sort of things that, like if you had a member of a national academy, does, does experience in the private sector come up in that so that like if someone is leaving a job at the private sector at a salary here and your bell curve has them slightly lower than that, is the private sector salary relevant for trying to get them a higher?
Not generally unless, so sort of the idea behind faculty ranges is the job is the job is the job. So you're, if, and it's a combination of teaching, research, and service. So if your private sector experience provides you better experience to deliver in teaching or it gives you a bump in research, it may be. But that is really at the discretion of the local department and the dean to make a recommendation. And then our team will look at it and you have to justify why you want the salary you do. So there are times that it does, but not automatically. Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing none.
I'm going to get off the hot seat.
Seeing none, hearing none, may I get a motion to approve the revised ranges? May I get a second? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you very much.
These items will be placed on the consent agenda for tomorrow's whole board meeting. We had a
point of clarification. I think if there's a, a nay vote, it can't go on the consent agenda.
I'm sorry. So.
Voted on by the whole board.
Okay. So that will be. So what will be on the, without objection, we can put it on the consent agenda for tomorrow. Everything is clarified. I'm not sure how many people were here this past weekend. Carolina celebrated a tremendous weekend. Anyone that was not here, I, I'm, I'm sorry you missed the weekend. It was fantastic and it culminated in probably the best, if not the best, graduation ceremony I have attended in my 52 years on this planet. It was phenomenal. I, I mean, I, I spent so much time around so many students and so many parents. And to a person, everyone said that it was fantastic. It was just, it was just off the charts. Inter-Chancellor Roberts, I'd like to thank you and your team for putting that together. It, it was truly something to behold and I'm hopeful that it is something we can continue to recreate. But, you know, as I was sitting. That's right. That's exactly right. And, and, you know, for our graduates, I mean, as everyone had said, I mean, that was the COVID class and they really came away from this, this ceremony feeling special. And it was, it was, it was a fantastic weekend to be in Chapel Hill. Sitting in, on the platform, kind of looking out over the field and seeing all the graduates, it, it does beg the question, you know, are we doing as a university, are we doing everything we can to put our graduates in a position to be successful when they leave Chapel Hill? And I, I would answer that we do a lot, but we are not, I would never want us to get to a point of being complacent because there are always improvements that we can make. And some of those improvements are evolutionary and occur slowly over time. Some of them are truly revolutionary. And I think that the reformation of our career services is one of those revolutionary moments for our university and for our students. And with that as a backdrop, I would like to invite Mindy Story and James Baracelli to come and introduce to our university and the campus community the work that you've done over the past year, give or take, and how it will improve our university going forward.
Thank you, Chair Jones. James and I are both quite excited and appreciate the opportunity to offer this board a summary of the Student Career and Life Skills Working Group report, as well as work that's been done just in the short time that James has been with us. I think you're going to be quite pleased with those efforts. I'll begin with a brief introduction and history of that working group. And then I'll invite James to offer an introduction, insight, and updates as the new Assistant Vice Chancellor of Career Development. I'll then return briefly to offer you some update in the area of life skills and leadership development based upon insight the working group defined. And specifically, the alumni and parent experiences available to us if we're able to align what our students need most with what parents and alums have to offer. Some of you may recall when I presented a year ago, I'm a triple Tar Heel. My first experience was as an MBA student in the Evening Program at Keenham Flagler when I was at GE Aviation. I have been an employee for almost 26 years. 25 at Keenham Flagler Business School focused on MBA Career and Leadership, the undergraduate business program, and the Eddie C. Smith Leadership Initiative. For the last year, I've been pleased to be the Associate Provost for Student Leadership, which is a position that Provost Clemens created. And my most proud, probably for some of you, is I am mama to a class of 2021 graduate. It's with all of those experiences and, and you're going to see background on our committee that we bring forward this conversation we've been having for a little over a year. This started on September 29, 2022, when you directed us in consultation with the Board Chair and the Chair of the Strategic, Strategic Initiatives Committee, which was trustee Jones at the time, to establish a work group. Just a little over a year ago, on January the 20th, the chancellor charged the working group with the following direction. "This new institutional body is charged with advising me and other members of our administration regarding the career and personal development experiences important for our Carolina students to be well-prepared for life beyond UNC, whether through employment, a global service role, graduate study, or another path. It is expected that the group will analyze these areas and will identify strengths and opportunities to leverage existing career and life skill programs and activities, as well as identify where enhancements can increase the value of the Carolina student experience." I would like to begin by thanking former chancellor and Chair Jones for assembling such a talented and diverse team of internal and external stakeholders and for offering me the opportunity to chair. You may recall from my last update that the 23 members included a lot of roles, wearing a lot of different hats, and it was a wealth of experience and insight. Here are our team members, which also included trustee White. I'll give you a second to look at the. And James joined us in October. We first tackled the topic of career as a working group. From an internal survey, here's what we found. We have many offices and places across the campus where students may encounter career resources, support, and/or advice. These units, centers, and institutes all contributed to the survey we conducted to gain an understanding of the current state of career services and education across the campus. The sources of career education are scattered and because of the lack of consistency on where they are located, in some departments, but not all, in some centers, but not all, there are potential challenges for students to find and identify the best source of career guidance for their particular situation. This is truly a hybrid structure that has evolved over time. The most common opportunities offered by units across the campus are listed here. Most units offer more than one of the opportunities to assist students in their career education. A student survey indicated faculty as a key resource students seek out for career guidance. Some faculty welcome that and feel well-prepared to offer guidance. Many others are not as familiar with how to conduct an effective, modern-day career search or are primarily familiar with academic or traditional roles. The National Association of Colleges and Employers, which is commonly named as NACE, represents over 16,000 college career services professionals, university relations, and recruiting professionals and the business solution providers that serve this community. This survey demonstrates one of the most important actions our community can take is to emphasize the value of work experience through a career-related internship, clinical rotation, research in the lab, work-study, experiential activity, or general work. And to help students translate that experience so employers can see and hear what they have to offer on a resume and in a job interview. The Chronicle for Higher Education stated in 2022, "College graduates can no longer rely on their degree to accurately signal their fitness for a job. Instead, they will need to clearly spell out the competencies they have acquired." I share with you the vision we created to initiate what we call a culture of career education for all UNC students. Career education at UNC viewed as a priority for all students. That we adopt ideas that build on our hybrid career structure. Students are encouraged to explore career options and are shown intentional connections between study and career. Pathways for career education are comprehensive and flexible to fit student needs. Faculty and staff provide support from a common understanding of career education and a shared language. We leverage new and existing technology that is student-focused, user-friendly, efficient, and cost-effective. The value of internship-like experiences is highlighted. Parents, alumni, employers, and friends are engaged as partners. Scalability and access are considered priorities and that we are innovative and not limited by the current resources. Our current state, our survey results, the industry research, and our vision led us to specific recommendations and actions. I invite James to offer an introduction, insight, and updates on the career implementation.
Thank you, Mindy, and thank you to the board and Chair Jones for the invitation to speak today. I'm James Baracelli, the new Assistant Vice Chancellor for Career Development. I joined UNC for the second time this past October and have been in the career field for about 20 years, both in public and private institutions, in main career centers, and also in college-based career centers, mainly business schools. My first tour, if you will, at UNC was in Keenham Flagler Business School where I managed employer relations for the full-time MBA program. So glad to be back and excited to be presenting to you today. And throughout my career, I have been in positions where I've either been in a new role or have been asked to bring change to an organization. An example of that is my previous position as the Executive Director for the Career Center at Georgia Tech. I inherited an organization that maybe didn't have the credibility the institute wanted internally. And I'm happy to say this year, after some leadership with that group, they're going to, they're going to earn three national awards for excellence. So change is something that's constant for me and I'm excited about the opportunity here at UNC to build something that this board will be proud of and that the Tar Heel community at large will be proud of. So let me give you a quick update on what we have been working on. Perfect. The working group did a great job under Mindy's leadership and under the leadership of trustee Jones and trustee White to come to particularly two immediate actions. These recommendations were made in October, actually my first day on the job. And those recommendations were to implement a Carolina Career Hub. The idea behind that was there's a lot of stuff related to career happening at UNC. And for employers, we're a big organization to navigate. So how can we put that information in one place to help our students and parents and employers understand where to go for career information? So creating this career hub. The second recommendation was to create a Career Champions Network. As Mindy mentioned, students can go to anyone on campus that they have a trusted relationship with and have a conversation. Sometimes that's not with a career professional or someone in a career center. And they may be asking about, "What should I be thinking about after graduation?" So how can we build a Career Champion Network that incorporates faculty, staff, coaches, other folks on campus to have that introductory conversation about career, understand what resources are available to our students, and make a good referral where that is needed? So let me tell you what, where we are with these recommendations over the past few months. I'm happy to say that we are on target with our timeline. With the Career Hub, a group had been assembled in the fall and we really worked on figuring out a site map and looking at all the resources that were available to students. We spent the spring semester building kind of a draft site. And we are at the, the end stages of getting feedback from major stakeholders to really finalize that site this summer and bring that to our student population, among others, once students return for the fall. And we imagine rolling that out during orientation also in July to orient students to that as soon as they, they come to Carolina. The Career Champions Network, we piloted that, two different pilots this spring. We had about 40 people go through those pilots. And we're identifying best practices at this point from those two pilots. We're going to do another pilot this summer to see if we can learn a bit more before we do a full-blown program this coming fall, 2024. So again, we are on target with where those recommendations were and we're, we're proud of that progress. Here is just a snapshot of where we are with the Career Hub. Again, this is still a work in progress. But here's sort of the landing page. Our hope is that we keep it clean and simple for our audiences to find information. And we are also making sure that we're making distinctions between resources for our undergraduate and graduate students. There's a little bit more of the website. And we are also thinking about this platform across, of course, different devices, different ways people will engage. So we're, we're designing this as inclusive as we can. The working group also shared with us ideas that they'd like us to further explore in the future. These were topics that came to mind in their discussions, but they didn't make specific recommendations on these. I wanted to share there, we are doing something in all four of these in terms of beginning to look into these a bit more. But I want to focus on just two that we have already started more substantially. Career courses, there's a variety of career courses on campus. And our first step was to hire a consultant to come in and review just the landscape of career courses. Taking a look at what exists, taking a look at the syllabi for those courses and is there are themes in terms of what's being taught in those courses or what may be missing? The idea here is this could be a potential collaboration with our Center for Faculty Excellence to think about if a faculty member would like to incorporate something related to career in their course, we can have ready-made modules ready to go. And it's not a heavy lift for our faculty members to think about this for, for their courses. There are also university career services courses on the books. We want to modernize those in a bit to retake a look at that curriculum. And in particular, there's a three-credit course around life design. And Mindy and I have talked about this, that this is a great collaboration to think about the integration of. to think about the integration of life skills, which is another piece of the Working Group that Mindy's gonna speak to, into that course. And we really think this is a good way to respond to the recommendations of the Working Group. In addition to that, we're taking a look at our career coaches' positions in university career services, changing those job descriptions, reconceptualizing how coaching might happen on campus. And in particular, we're starting to explore generative AI and how we might be able to use that as an on-demand career tool. As you can imagine, it's up and coming, and we're all trying to figure out how to best utilize that in a safe, safe way. So I'm gonna turn it back to Mindy, who is going to give you the last update on life skills.
So we found ourselves asking, "What is life skills?" I did a one-on-one with every team member and asked, and as probably no surprise to you, got a different answer from each. We decided, as a working group, to view life skills in the context of a UNC undergraduate alum in the first five years post-graduation, living independently. Our thinking considered opportunities to build on UNC's Ideas and Action general education curriculum. Considered the Working Group's vision of career education in our recommendations, assumed graduate and professional schools are in the best position to define life skills for their unique students and sought to identify the most logical internal handoff to carry forward with what we found. No surprise, we have a number of strengths, and we wanted to build on them. We mapped the Ideas and Action curriculum to the NACE Career Readiness Competencies and found very strong alignment in almost every area. Undergraduates are now introduced to Academic Advising, Student Success Center, and Student Wellness in the Thrive Course. And once again, we have many eager alum and parent groups across the university. Financial literacy was a very easy life skill to agree upon. We learned quite a bit of activity has been happening on this campus in this area for at least two years. I reached out to Professor Chip Snively for an update on his course. He offered the following. In 2022-23, two hundred and sixty students completed his financial literacy course, and we know there is at least one more similar course offered on UNC. This past year, six hundred and fifty-one students completed Chip's course, and he shared that his course and assignment survey indicated four point five or higher on a five-point scale on most measures. For next year, he has planned eight sections with a capacity of a hundred and forty-five each for a total of one thousand one hundred and sixty. Chip shared that he has identified some improvements that can be made, and he has already met our new Executive Director of Student Financial Well-being, Gilbert Rogers. Through a partnership of units across the campus, we are in the planning stage of creating more mentor-like programs, similar to what James mentioned in Career, with a pilot launch for student leaders this fall and the expectation of a program focused on life skills to follow. I will share more on that in the next slide. We will continue to explore two areas where there may be opportunity for improvement, highlighted in the NACE Career Readiness Mapping in the areas of self-development and professionalism. Colleagues in the University Career Office, James and others, Student Life and Leadership, University Development, Carolina Alumni, and Keenan Flagler Development, as well as Elizabeth Rieker, Chair of the Parents Leadership Society, and Juan Castro, a '22 and '24 alum, both of them from the Chancellor's Working Group. This entire group has all agreed to help me explore the best way to launch a new student leader champion program. Our goal is to help student leaders take full advantage of university-wide resources as well as alumni and parent experience to help them develop as leaders who have a positive impact on the teams they lead. It's designed for undergraduate, graduate, and professional student leaders and those considering leadership positions while at UNC. Our champion audience will be alums and parents with leadership experiences at all levels and all types of careers, both for-profit and nonprofit. The plan is to sign up student leaders this summer for an early August introduction to their champion or thinking partner. The goal of the Life Skill Champion Program is to help students and recent alums develop the life skills necessary for the independent living through the first five years post-undergrad. It's designed for students living off-campus and alums up to five years post-graduation, living independently. Our audience will be alums three to five years post-graduation and older. And we hope for a launch with the Carolina alumni support to the class of 2024. I offer with you the five whys for why we're piloting a student leader program. First of all, influencing and leading peers without the benefit of financial rewards is one of the most challenging learning opportunities a student might encounter. We can offer a safe and supportive space to practice leadership that can exponentially impact the career progression of our graduates, especially with the benefit of feedback and reflection. Student leadership experience will positively impact the ability of our graduates to contribute to the organizations and communities they engage with beyond Carolina. We can help match student interests with alumni and parent experience, and a pilot will offer us an opportunity to test the benefits of a program that may be expanded to all student leaders and offer broader benefits in the future. This is what we imagine success may look like. For example, student leaders find value in the extra time they spend with a thinking partner for a return on investment. Student leaders recommend the program to others, and that thinking partners enjoy the time they spend with the students for a return on engagement. The challenges, here are some examples of where an alum or parent might help student leaders. For example, how do I address conflict or poor performance with team members who are also my friends? My predecessor didn't leave me anything. Where do I start? I'm overwhelmed. How do I effectively empower and delegate to others? And perhaps the most important, a reminder of where to find crisis support, personal wellness support, campus policies, leadership resources, and campus expertise on our campus. I believe the Working Group experience reminded us of what we all have in common, an interest in student well-being and success at UNC and beyond, that we all have valuable experiences and perspectives to offer, and by truly listening to each other, we can offer our best recommendations. Thank you.
Mindy, thank you. James, thank you. This, this group consisted of people that are both inside the university as well as people that are outside the university, our alumni, parents, friends, et cetera. And to distill everything down, the intent is to have every student develop a purpose for their educational pursuits here at Carolina, to be able to navigate all of the programs that we already have on campus so that they can meet the goals that they have set for themselves, to receive some form of intentional leadership training while they're here, as well as meeting with career service professionals to have mentorship, the ability to have a mentor, as well as to have some type of an internship program while they're an undergraduate. And the ultimate goal is for our graduates to be as prepared as we can make them as they leave Chapel Hill and go forward into the world at large. And that is a phenomenal goal to set for ourselves as a university, and I really appreciate y'all's leadership in helping to put such a program together. With that, does anyone have any questions for either James or Mindy?
I don't have a question. I would just encourage both of you to please stay through the Strategic Conditions Committee and hear the presentation of Dr. Greg Sharaklis about something that is gonna help give freshmen a pathway for their career and grad students a pathway to bigger and better jobs.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank you guys for, that was an idea that came from this board that Trustee White and Trustee Jones had brought to the board. I mean, I started off with the idea that we didn't want career services to be the DMV of UNC, right? That we didn't want it to be the place of last resort, that it wasn't, it wouldn't be the cool place to go to get help with a career. We wanted it to be the first place students want to go to get assistance with career ideas and moving them forward. And based on what you presented, I think, you know, we're well on our way. So I want to thank you for doing that and just encourage you not to, let's not let this sit on a shelf and collect dust. Let's make it something that's living and continues to grow and move forward. Thank you.
Trustee Ballantyne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for that presentation. I was just wondering how, well, first of all, let me say I think it's an excellent opportunity for students, but how do you notify those students that that opportunity exists, one? And then, two, what are your goals for participation? You know, maybe a percentage goal of students who actually participate?
I'm gonna make the assumption that's around career, right? So I'm gonna start there, but there might be other elements. And your question was around, what's our goal and what's our engagement target? Ultimately, we really need to get out there. The traditional model of career services is stay in the office and wait for students to come on in. We're gonna completely change that. We need to take resources where students are, and thinking through a new service delivery model. We hope that will be a huge impact in student engagement. The other big shift that we plan to change is a lot of times, one-on-one appointments is sort of the way to get it done. And I call that hand-to-hand combat. That's not scalable. And we need strategies that are gonna reach more students, still in a very effective way. So we're gonna switch the paradigm to much more workshops, programs. I'm working with our distributed campus career partners. How do we open up programs that are already available and visible across campus? In the Career Hub, one piece we're trying to work through is some of the details of how to pull in events all across campus in one place as students can see everything. So one, we're trying to increase access. We're trying to increase visibility. And then we're trying to get resources to where students are. I think that's our first shot at the engagement plan. This worked at Georgia Tech. This is a different institution, so we'll see if we need to tweak our strategy as we get into that. But I think we should see double the engagement we're seeing right now at a minimum. Mindy, is there anything you wanted to add?
Okay.
Does that answer your question? Trustee Ballantyne, to your question, for us to do this, I mean, as a university, for us to do this, we are gonna need all hands on deck. We're gonna need full support of our communications team, our development team, our faculty, our administration, our alumni, our parents, our friends. Everyone is gonna have to really rally around the idea of how do we support our students and get them prepared to go into the world. And I think that with the tremendous amount of goodwill that we have within this university and that the love that our alumni and our students have for this place, I don't think that that is such a heavy lift. And I think that that is a goal that we'll be able to accomplish in spades. Trustee Brian?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just appreciate this work. I do think it's a great alumni involvement opportunity, which is, you know, occasionally I used to hear things like the Davidson Mafia and things like that. We should have that same ability with our alumni. So, and I think it'll actually create development opportunities too, because as you engage with folks, they're like, "Wow, we love this program. You asked, you connected me to this student. That was meaningful to me." So I appreciate those connections. And I don't know how much, and I like the breakdown of some of the life skills. People are gonna have different needs. You know, I know some of the ROTC kids, they joke, they get great leadership, but they don't know how to, you know, do other sort of basic life skills that other kids have worked on, and kids in, you know, the business school or the humanities may all be needing different things. So I kind of appreciate your breakdown. Have y'all connected much with some of the different groups? And I'm just glad to have this conversation online, that are on campus that appear to be doing some of these things with students right now? Like, I know the Study Center does some great work with students, and I just don't know what kind of connective tissue you guys are building with those groups.
Thanks, absolutely. In fact, some of those groups who are represented in the Working Group, if you looked at the titles of some of the members, but it's led to even more relation. And so we'd like to build on the great work that's already being done, Student Success Center, the Wellness Center, Student Life and Leadership across the campus. That's really the approach that we want to take, is educate ourselves on what's already going on, bring as many people into the tent as possible, and then look at what we can improve in an efficient and effective way.
Trustee Patel?
I was just impressed by the numbers that you recited about kids taking the financial courses. I remember the first, I think it was my first meeting, I had said that it should be a mandatory requirement, that you have to take a financial resource class to graduate Carolina, because I think that's the one thing people come out of is they don't know what they don't know, and that's a life, that's a skill that needs to happen. If it's not taught here, it will never be understood fully. So that was just a great number, and the fact that it's rising on a regular basis. It's incredible. So, thank you.
Any other comments from anyone? I mean, it just, this was actually Trustee Blaine's suggestion, and I appreciate that. I don't think that our student body president, Julia Taylor, has had a chance to introduce herself, and obviously, this is all about the students. It would be a great opportunity for her to potentially comment. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Julia Taylor. I am a guest rising senior now, studying political science and media and journalism. I've recently been elected as Student Body President of UNC Chapel Hill, and it's an honor to be here with you all today. I will be giving more remarks tomorrow, but I'm from Charlotte, North Carolina. Really enjoy running, passionate about student advocacy. I've been in student government since I came to Carolina. Served as secretary last year, learned a lot from Christopher Everett. And so I'm super excited to continue to serve in this capacity and really am excited about these new student success programs that you all just presented about and the career of.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions, comments? If not, thank you both for your time. And this concludes our open session items. I'll now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I move that the University Affairs Committee go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143, 31811A1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential information, and also pursuant to Section 143, 31811A3, A5 and A6.
Heard the motion of a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All papers say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are in closed session. We are in closed session.[541.13]
Approved it, and interim Chancellor Roberts approved it. Those come to this board for information only. So we're going to see a presentation on the institute. I won't go into the details. I'm just letting you know it is in the planning stage. It has been officially authorized by all the relevant committees and people to be an institute in that in that authorization to plan step. No questions?
No question. So come on up Greg Charaklis. And I'm just going to give a quick one here because many years ago, when I was on the Board of Visitors of the Institute for the Environment, we had my company had sponsored a PhD candidate here. And his faculty advisor had gotten to be a friend. And so we liked the PhD candidate so much, we eventually hired him. And this would have been circa 2004 or five, what was the? And he came came in the office one day and said, man, JP, you've got to come to Carolina and see the best professor on campus. We've just hired. This guy is off the charts. And he'd come from a company in Houston by the name of Enron, which I love to tease Dr. Charaklis about. But he quickly established one of the most interesting disciplines between the Gilling School of Public Health and the Institute for the Environment, which I followed very closely through the Board of Visitors on the Institute for the Environment. And what he's going to go through today is, I think, something that has the potential to be a transformative new model for bringing money into the university, private money that is from one of the most well-funded industries in the country outside of oil and gas, which is the insurance industry. And for the past 10 plus years, Greg has been the head of something called the Center on Financial Risk and Environmental Systems, COFIREs is the acronym. And building upon that with an old friend of mine who was a morehead here and been a M and A specialist in the insurance industry his career. And he approached us about why can't Carolina be a center of excellence in establishing the tie between financial risk, environmental risk, and the insurance industry? And combine a big component of data science in order to make it something truly unique and exceptional. And he is the person who is going to lead it. And this is what we're going to hear from him right now. So Greg, take it away.
So Board Chair Pryor, thank you for that introduction. Now the bar's been set so high, I don't know that I can do anything but disappoint. Chairman Codis and members interim Chancellor Roberts and members of the board, thanks very much for the opportunity to come and present some of these ideas today. As as Provost Clemens said, we're just entered the planning stage. The second stage for a center and institute like this is the permission to establish. And we hope to bring back a more detailed proposal to you sooner rather than later. And this is an opportunity to provide some information and get some feedback. So thanks. So let me introduce you to the Institute for Risk Management and Insurance Innovation. This is an industry, risk management and insurance, that faces unprecedented challenges. And overcoming these is going to require new talent and novel solutions. So just a few examples, nothing you don't read in the papers these days, but the world is subject to new, larger and more complex financial risks. They affect all corners of society, increasing frequency and severity of natural hazards, hurricanes, floods, droughts. COVID brought home the the potential implications of infectious disease and pandemics. Cybersecurity risks are rapidly increasing concern to the business community. So we need better risk management. And it's required by not just individual citizens, but also private and public sector actors, homeowners, federal, state, local governments, small businesses, global corporations. As Chairman Pryor just pointed out, the risk management insurance industry is huge, multi-trillion dollar industry, one of the world's largest. And it's responsible for helping us manage these risks. So here we're talking about an ecosystem that involves insurers, reinsurers, lenders, ratings agencies, investors, they all play important roles. The industry has a significant footprint here in North Carolina. Large players like Amwin's and Truist operate out of Charlotte. We've got Genworth that operates out of out of Raleigh. It is the industry is desperate for employees with more advanced skills. And there's currently a lack of programs designed to to create these problem solvers. And so they need expertise to characterize and quantify the emerging risks and then training necessary to recognize and design the new solutions that will help us better manage. So the Institute for Risk Management and Insurance Innovation is designed to meet these needs. So what is it? Creative research hub. Designed to train interdisciplinary and masters and PhD students focused on industry problems. It'll also develop a certificate program in risk management and insurance. It'll be designed with industry input. A student cohort, upper level undergrads and graduate students drawn from across campus, engineering, economics, the sciences, business. They'll be put through a specialized curriculum. They'll also be available for industry internships. The centerpiece of all of this will be strong engagement with industry. So guest lectures and seminars, we've already seen a tremendous demand for these sorts of of students and these sorts of research activities from from the industry. They want to be engaged. And so we'll bring them in not only for for these sorts of activities, but in order to put them in close proximity with these students so that there's a rapport that can be built over time and such that they can give us a lot of advice on how we design the program overall. The Industry Advisory Board will be an important component of that. And we've had tremendous outpouring of interest from some of the largest players in the industry being a part of it. We'll host an annual event that brings together professionals and researchers designed to facilitate understanding of the new risks and the design of new risk transfer products. And then provide industry with access to the best and brightest young people, those that have been put through some some unique training. As as Board Chair Pryor pointed out, we're not building from scratch here. We've got some nice foundation in the Center on Financial Risk and Environmental Systems. This is something that's been developing within my research group for probably close to 20 years. We put a formal name on it about seven years ago, COFIREs. We focus mostly on a wide range of natural hazards, floods, droughts, infectious disease. We take an interdisciplinary approach to evaluating risk and developing new risk transfer products. The research involves computational modeling at a very advanced level, big data analytics, machine learning and AI. Training includes courses from across campus. Everything from engineering, finance to natural sciences and economics. We currently train a cohort of about 10 graduate researchers at a time and teach a broader cohort of 25. And we've got an average annual budget of around a million dollars, with almost all those funds coming from external grants and contracts, groups like National Science Foundation, Department of Energy and so forth. So for its size, COFIREs is relatively well-funded, has a reasonably creative research agenda. I'll give you just very quick rundown of a couple of of themes. We've developed some novel index insurance for electric power utilities, protect against correlated financial risks of heat waves and droughts. Looked at the impact of flood insurance on reducing mortgage defaults and home abandonments. This is a big focus of folks in Raleigh. Some folks in the General Assembly very interested in how these sorts of effects impact eastern North Carolina. We've been looking to assess the impacts of subsidies subsidies on flood insurance uptake. And when we do these sorts of analyses, we also often run into what we feel are some unpriced or mispriced risks in different markets. One of the areas we've identified is we don't think that flood risk is is incorporated accurately into something like the commercial mortgage-backed securities market. COVID brought a new set of of interesting financial risks to groups like healthcare facilities, business disruption. They canceled a lot of procedures, non non emergency and elective procedures in order to make room for COVID-related patients. That made sense for public health reasons, but it also introduced some financial risks that they've got to figure out how to manage. There were also some big unexpected financial losses associated with reduction in emergency room visits that they didn't expect. Financial risks of transport disruptions along critical inland waterways. Mississippi River is an example, low water levels, disrupted barge traffic and the ability of to get goods to market, usually by far the most inexpensive way relative to rail and truck. So we've designed some parametric insurance products to manage these risks and identified some some mispriced risks, we think, in the commodities markets that come about as a result of these events. And another example, we focused on hydropower, probably about 20% of global electricity generation, but subject to big losses during droughts. Droughts don't occur at the same same time in all places. Therefore, there's a nice opportunity to pool a lot of these risks and come up with more efficient types of risk management solutions. So the idea is that the new institute will expand on and leverage this existing portfolio of projects, even as COFIREs is is wrapped into the folds of the new entity. I was already introduced, so I won't spend much time here. I've been at Carolina since since 2001. Native Montanan, but consider myself an honorary North Carolinian after 23 years. Spent some time in Baltimore and in Houston in undergraduate and graduate school, spent some time in DC. And then Board Chair Pryor already outed me in terms of my my experience in the corporate world, so. So we've got a relatively vibrant and well-funded organization right now, just at a relatively small scale. Masters and doctoral students that go on to do some wonderful things. Done some wonderful things from a research standpoint, but also a lot of them go out into the private sector, into insurance and reinsurance industries. They've gone out into the ratings agencies, places like Standard and Poor's. They've gone into consulting places like McKinsey, Oliver Wyman, which is the consultant of choice for most of the insurance industry. And had a few of them go out into the entrepreneurial space and do some really fascinating things in with Insuretech.
Wait, wait one second. Are those pictures taken in bars?
Only two of them.
Huh.
Two of them. And and neither of them actually are still operating, which is that. So Linda's down in the lower left and and Mel and mushroom in the upper right.
An institution for your graduating cohorts, right?
You work them hard and then you got to reward them, right? So that's that's the way. So the idea is to build something much larger in terms of scale and much broader topically. Current focus is on a lot of natural hazards, floods, droughts, extreme temperatures, infectious disease, with an understanding of the impacts they have on a number of different sectors of the economy. We want to focus on in the future on expanded range of perils, risks, wind, earthquakes, wildfire, cyber risk, and even move into life insurance and annuities. The focus is going to be on building a unique program, one that's very different. We certainly want to endow these students with some quantitative skills. They'll be necessary to help them understand and 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 manage these risks. But importantly, and this is where the engagement with industry comes in, we want them to build the intuition and perspective to be able to identify commercial opportunities for managing and 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 identifying and managing these risks. And to do that, we really need close interaction with with the industrial sector. So we'll be we'll build on an established program. We've got experienced and talented staff. We've got a steady funding stream. We've got collaborative relationships across campus, School of Public Health, the college, School of Government, the collaboratory, as well as connections with both private and public sector groups across the country. We've had fantastic support for this initiative. It really is at a very early stage, but interim Chancellor Roberts has been wonderfully supportive. You've already heard from from Board Chairman Pryor. He has been interested in this project for a number of of reasons and for since its inception. Vice Chancellor Development Andreessen, as well as his associate, Carissa Grasty, have have been fantastic. And I haven't see Trusty Bolick here right now, but he has also been supportive from the earliest days. And these are just the people on this list right here. Provost Clemens and and Vice Chancellor Gordon Larson have both been incredibly helpful in getting things to this stage within the university. And then I do want to to point out, I'd be very remiss if I didn't bring up one of the people that's been most instrumental in this, and that's UNC alum Tony Ursano. He is a very prominent member of the insurance industry. He has devoted an incredible amount of time and energy to this initiative, introducing me to his vast network of very high-profile clients, friends, colleagues within the industry, and they've been incredibly receptive. I'd love to say it was all due to my salesmanship, but I'm not foolish enough that that I don't know that Tony's Tony's high profile within the industry is playing a big role. So next steps. We'd like to establish the center as a pan-campus entity under the Office of the Vice Chancellor of Research. That way we can draw the best from all of the schools on campus, schools with which we already have a number of linkages. We seek to hire an executive director as well. Perhaps the most important position at this early stage is the Director of Industry Engagement. And we've already targeted somebody for that. She's very talented. We're going to have to draw her away from what she's doing right now, but I think we've got a good shot. And we've targeted somebody for the Associate Director of Research position. And we'll be looking for someone for the Associate Director of Experiential Educational Programs as well. The goal to build a greatly expanded research unit as well as a certificate-based training program available to both undergraduates and graduate students. We'll continue to seek funding by external research grants. We've had a lot of success with that over time with groups like National Science Foundation, Department of Energy. And we may come back to the university with some request for internal support as well. Most importantly, and the thing that we've been spending most of our time on is this development of our industry partners program. We're looking for up to 40 members to commit meaningful levels of support for three years. I have to say, we have been at this, and when I say that, it's been Tony that's been providing us entree to a lot of these these big players within the industry. The response has been beyond my wildest dreams. We have probably had 20, 25 calls, and I would guess that 20 of them have been very receptive. And we've had 15 of them not only commit, but commit to a number. We've got another five that that have committed. They just haven't given us a number yet. And we're talking here about insurers, reinsurers, ratings agencies, private equity, institutional investors. They are really hungry for more talent within their industry, and they see this as a pathway to do it. So the partners are going to have input on the training program design as well as opportunities to teach and participate in it, which I think they're thrilled about. They're also going to have the ability to fund select applied research projects as well as recruit students for summer internships and then post-graduation. So the stage that we're at, I think, has already been laid out a little bit by by Provost Clemens. We have, just as recently as last week, been granted approval for our permission to plan, which gives us the ability to go out and tell some of our industry partners that that have committed that we are well on our way to making this happen. At what point do they do we feel comfortable in going back and and calling in those commitments? We may wait until permission to establish has been approved, which is something that we will come back to the board to for sooner rather than later. I would say more on the order of months rather than years. We may get a few of them that are willing to to fund their commitments even earlier than that. So we'll see. But that will also allow us to to more more formally engage with our industry partners in both the design and the institute. And once we do that, one of the things that we'll be seeking to do as quickly as possible is develop an annual networking and fundraising event. So the benefits of partnership, it really comes down to the people. And we have a tremendous amount of talent here at Carolina that we'll be able to tap. But what we're looking to do and what the industry is really interested in is access to the best people and the most innovative ideas. They're going to have an opportunity to interact and 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 work with brightest graduate students, those that have been prepared through interdisciplinary training to work on on problems of of interest to industry. They'll have access to well-trained undergraduates that are going to be able to hit the ground running on day one. They'll have been put through specialized coursework designed with industry input. They'll have had exposure to commercial perspectives. And they'll also have had the benefit of some enrichment activities and internships. Partners will have first look at cutting-edge research, the ability to provide feedback on it as well as opportunities to define research projects of particular interest. Some of them have already begun to jump the gun and ask when they could put some 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 new ideas in front of us. And then special events designed to bring together the most creative thinkers from from both the professional world and and the world of research. So they'll have an opportunity to network. We'll also have opportunities. They'll have opportunities to provide input on the institute's future direction and activities. So that's where things sit. I I don't want to take up too much of your time. I'm happy to answer questions if there's time. I can also stick around for a little while, or my email address is not hard to find. I'm happy to to talk about this in more detail.
Just real quick, I want to apologize for the timing of the day. And Chairman Codis was teasing me about I could have done something with the calendar to put you. And we actually had this scheduled in the Budget Committee originally, which is what I was thinking. Then they got put in Strategic Initiatives, so that's why you're still here and why we've probably got another four or five hours of meeting after you go. But.
Forgive me if I don't stay past the next.
Trust me, you you can go as soon as you're done. But real quick, student body president, this is what I wanted you to hear. If Greg could say, and I don't think it's appropriate, but if he could tell you what the master's students and the PhD students that get out of your program, what they're making when they get out of it versus, I mean, it's it is a highly sought-after skill set. And the thing about the insurance industry that I didn't fully appreciate, people think it's a sleepy industry and they think life insurance and they want to run from anybody who starts talking about insurance. They're not thinking about, you know, planes do not fly. Electric cars, driverless cars don't drive. Ships don't leave port. You know, ships that run into bridges have massive insurance and reinsurance implications. And one of the things on the call that I've been on a lot of these calls, but one of them that really struck me was, and it happens early in, whoever the industry person is, and it's usually a president or a CEO of a company, says, you know, the problem we have is we don't have enough talent. We don't have trained people coming out of schools that we, you know, we need a talent pipeline. And one of them went on at length and said, you know, everybody wants to go into investment banking, or everybody wants to go into consulting. And, you know, you're not going to do any serious transactions. Your first, I don't know, three, four years, you're going to be putting books together. You're going to be doing road shows, you're going to be doing this. He said, the insurance industry is the only industry that I know of where you could be a year out of school and do $100 million deal. And it happens routinely. So am I?
No, and and probably one of the best-selling points, I think, is is bringing back some of the alumni of our group and having them speak to the 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 level of success and the level of excitement that that has characterized their careers early on. People three and four years out are involved in very important decisions and and things that that also have a strong intellectual component that allows them to to display their skills in a way that that demonstrates value. And so, yeah, they'll be an important component in getting people excited about this. The other one is, we'll put the risk management label first and the insurance second so that people don't think about their their parents', insurance agents coming over to the house and stuff. But that's that's we we've had great reception to the to the types of people we've put out so far. And now we're just looking to amplify.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just wanted to underscore what what Greg and John said. So it's very difficult to get something like this launched, especially in such a short period of time. It's been a tremendous effort bringing resources from across the the enterprise. The employer response has been very strong. The student response has been very strong. The donor response has been extraordinary. And Greg deserves an enormous amount of credit for that. Chairman Pryor also deserves an enormous amount of credit. He spent a huge amount of time on this. And the it it really has paid off, particularly in terms of getting the word out and getting donors' attention to this. We've really, I think, identified something that has extremely promising potential for for Carolina for a long time. So thank you.
Are there any questions for Director Trustless?
Three quick things. Thank you. Always supportive. I'm glad to hear that data science is being incorporated. And I think that data science is something that we need to look at incorporating in terms of implementation of research in just about every endeavor that we have. And final thing is, I think the honorary designation comes at 25 years, not 23. Yes, messing with me.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you for your time today.
Thanks very much.
One item I'd like to just ask for is the several committee members have inquired about the potential to have a brainstorming session outside of this where we can have more time to just kind of chit chat and and review some items and understanding which staff are available to kind of help us. And maybe reviewing the committee charter, make sure we're we're being very productive. But sometimes it's hard to fit that into a schedule and got such a short time when we're all together with everybody in the room. So that concludes our business for today. Without objection, we will stand adjourned.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the May meeting of the Committee on External Relations. As Chair of this committee, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. All right. Chris McClure, will you please call the role?
Sure. Chair White. Vice Chair Ballantyne. Mr. Blaine. Mr. Bryan. Mr. Kalapa. Mr. Codis. Mr. Meekins. Mr. Patel. Mr. Pryor. Ms. Taylor. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Our first item of business is to review and approve the open and closed minutes of the March 27th, 2024 meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the open and closed minutes of the March 27th? All right. Thank you, Trustee Codis. Do I have a second? Thank you, Trustee Ballantyne. All, any in discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. And we place this item on the consent agenda for the full board's approval tomorrow. Our next agenda item this afternoon is to hear a legislative update from Amy McConney, Director of State Affairs, and Kelly Dockum, Director of Federal Affairs. And I believe, Amy, you're going first, right?
That's on. Okay, great. Good afternoon. Chair White, Vice Chair Ballantyne, Chancellor. It's great to see you all here today. I'm going to keep this relatively brief, so I'm going to go through four key points. We're going to touch on the state budget update and a revenue forecast. We're going to look at some legislation of interest to UNC and talk about some changes with leadership in relevant committees. And then finally, we'll end on engagement and special events. Okay, so jumping right in, you know, we've, we're just in the short, in the early days of session. But I thought it would be helpful to give just some quick background again on where, where the budget was. We're in the second year of a two-year budget, and so that budget was passed, or became law, I should say, on October 3rd of last year. Looking at $29.8 billion in the current year and $30.9 billion in year two. And of course, that budget was also a trigger for Medicaid expansion. It funded important investments in higher ed, including, as we were so glad to see, $7.5 million recurring dollars for computer science expansion here on campus and an additional two and a half million non-recurring in startup. And then, of course, some authorization and funding for important capital projects on campus. So looking at the second year of the biennium, the UNC system is seeking an additional 70 million in funding. That's one, you know, works out to almost 2% from the legislature. And that, the bulk of that money is based on the new performance-weighted funding model. So there is, I think, about $46 million of that 70 that is attributed to that. Of course, we are part of a system office request for upgrades to security equipment and infrastructure. We've got a $4 million request as part of the vetted system request for additional enterprise security cameras. We had some news late last week about the revenue forecast for the state. Of course, there was a large revenue forecast, overage, excuse me, surplus that was reported earlier, $1.4 billion. That was revised down on Friday to $1 billion. 188 million of that in the current year, and then almost 800 million in the next year. So OSBM, the Office of State Budget and Management, and the Fiscal Research Division sort of co-authored that new guidance based on the April tax returns. So now the lawmakers must decide whether and how to spend these new dollars. There's been several ideas put out there on the table, and that is, of course, the task they have ahead of them this session. So as far as pacing of, of the budget, there's been some reports that there really is some hope of working through the budgeting process swiftly. We'll see how that plays out. Those things, things tend to hit the skids. I hear, I hear some, I hear some jeers from the audience, so I, I expect that we'll, we'll we'll certainly see some of that happening this session. But let's get into legislation. House Bill 912, we have some good news to report. This is the annual self-liquidating capital bill that moves through the legislature every session. Fortunately, I think lawmakers sort of understand what this is now. There's fewer questions. This bill coasted through two committees. It was heard and got a unanimous support in the House Universities Committee last week. Was heard in House Finance this morning. Really no discussion of those, of these bills. I think some good meetings on the front end, folks understood what they were authorizing. And that bill actually skipped over rules and moved straight to the House floor today and got an almost unanimous hearing. There was, there was one member who typically likes to vote no on these things, who, who followed suit and did that today. But almost unanimous support on the House floor. It'll have one final third reading vote tomorrow. So we expect that to, again, get, get the support it needs. And then it will move on to the Senate. There is no Senate companion bill. In years prior, there has been. This year, they're just all going to run the House bill and that'll move over to the Senate next week. Okay, we have some changes in our key committees. The House Universities Committee, Representative John Harteister, who, as you, you all know, ran for Labor Commissioner. He opted to resign from the legislature about a month ago. And Representative Allen Branson of Guilford County was appointed to fill his role in that Guilford County seat. Now Representative Ray, Ray Pickett, who is the co-chair of the House Universities Committee, he's got the committee to himself. So he is the sole chair now of that committee. Representative Branson will be sitting on the House Universities Committee. So we are excited to engage with him. Additionally, on the House Education Appropriations Committee, Representative Harteister was a chair of that committee as well. And Representative Tricia Cawtham of Mecklenburg County was appointed to fill the vacancy that Harteister left. So she will co-chair that committee with Representative David Willis of Union County and Representative John Torbit of Gaston. I should mention, you know, Representative Cawtham has a degree from Carolina. She also is a member of our Board of Visitors. Moving into engagement and special events, we have, we had some great opportunities. I was able to, the day, I think, that you were sworn in as Student Body President, Jaleah Taylor and her colleagues in student government joined me for some, a day at the legislature. It was before the legislature had officially come into session for the short session. So it was a quieter day at the building, but we were so glad to have opportunities to visit with Representative Pickett, who chairs our Universities Committee on the House side, as well as Representative Kyle Hall, who took us down to the House floor. We also had some great visits with staff from the Speaker's Office. So look forward to doing that again. Jaleah and her, her and her team were great, you know, representatives for UNC. And our members really enjoyed meeting them. So we were invited the very next day, April, April 4th, the day after we were down with Jaleah and her group. We were, Dedrick Carter was invited to present to a group called the Economic Development and Foreign Trade Caucus. This is a bipartisan group. It's got about 50 members in it. It's led by the House Majority, or excuse me, the House Majority Leader and the Senate Majority Leader. And they were interested in looking into innovation in higher ed, specifically economic development that comes out of that innovation. So Dedrick did an awesome job presenting about the impact that Carolina's research has on the state's economic development picture. He also presented alongside representatives from NC Innovation, the UNC System, and NC State. And I actually, I did not ask his permission, but I pulled a couple of his slides because I thought you all would find it interesting, the things that he was meeting with this group about. He gave an example of cell and gene therapy. And you see this regional cluster, all of these companies, many of them that you've heard of. And then he pulled out those affiliated with UNC Chapel Hill, where the IP came from us. And then you can see here, all of those companies, excuse me, in blue are directly from UNC Chapel Hill. But you can also see really the multiplier there that's happening with that regional cluster. So that was, that was great data. It's a great story for us to share. And I think lawmakers were very impressed by the impact. This was in just one industry cluster. Another engagement opportunity we had recently, the UNC Science Policy and Advocacy Group. Dr. Jeff Warren is their faculty sponsor. And we met with our local legislative delegation. So we had Senator Greg Meyer and Representative Allen Boynce come to campus just to have some conversation with these students about science policy. They had previously met with, we had brought them to the legislature, and so they had great meetings there with leaders in health policy. And we had done a how-to lobby workshop with them prior to that. So we've had some great, great engagement with that group over this past year. And finally, I was excited to talk about this one. This is a big day. We had lawmakers, we had some of our trustees join us for the UNC versus UNCC baseball game. It was on April 30th. A lot going on on campus. We, we, it was a great way for us to show these lawmakers that, you know, look, you know, look at the field. It was, it was a great day for a baseball game. And, you know, they, they see images on TV that paints a picture, but they also see that campus is open for business. And we had a great night with them in this game. So this is Representative Wayne Sasser. He was, we, we chose him to throw out the first pitch. He's a retiring member. He's the only pharmacist in the legislature. He's a UNC Pharmacy grad and a proud one at that, and I think it meant a lot to him to throw out the first pitch. We also had a legislative assistant sing the National Anthem. He's a, he, he works for Representative Garland Pierce's office, and that was such an honor for him to sing the anthem. Bunch of pictures. I could have included a lot more. I made a little photo collage here of some of the great interaction we had. You know, great assist from the Athletics Department staff, so appreciative of A.D. Cunningham, Rick Steinbacher and his team, bringing out Coach Hubert Davis. It was a real star. We were delighted to have the chancellor join us. That made a real impact on these lawmakers, and you can just see lots of smiles all around. It was a great night. And of course, I failed to mention, Trustee Bryner as well joined us, and so did Trustee Chair Pryor, who, who I don't see in the room now, but all around great event. There you are. Planning is underway for Graduate Education Day. It's next week. We have three really impressive graduate students coming down, along with Dean Beth Meyer-Davis, to meet with lawmakers about the really amazing research that they're doing. So we'll be visiting with a variety of members, sort of fine-tuned those visits with members where they're constituents or have subject matter expertise, and we're looking forward to another great Graduate Education Day. Finally, I just wanted to make a note about how impressed our lawmakers were with our commencement ceremony. Several of them were in attendance. We had some lawmakers who spoke at our departmental graduations. And I've heard so much comments about how well-done it all was. So just a huge thanks to everyone involved in that. For me personally, it helped just serve as a conduit, helped with some accessibility for some of our lawmakers who had accessibility challenges and some folks here on campus really helped me with that. You know, Stacy Warner in particular was amazing to work with on that. So that's all for me. Glad to take any questions.
Neither you. Does anyone have any questions for any? No, okay, thanks.
Hey, good afternoon. Thank you, as always, for allowing me the opportunity to provide a quick update as to what's happening in Washington, DC. Last time I was here before the committee, I had provided an update on appropriations for fiscal year '24 that had been wrapped up. Now Congress is looking ahead at fiscal year '25. So they're really in the early stages here, so not much to report there. So today, my update is going to focus on authorizing legislation and two really notable committees in Congress that are of significance to the Carolina community here. Again, Carolina, such a broad array of issues at the federal level. And so just pick these two for the fact that education and health and workforce are in their, their titles. And they do a lot for this university. So I call this the tale of two committees, highlighting recent activity in legislation and also describing policy-focused areas in each and how they vary. Looking first at the Senate Commerce, I mean, the Senate Committee on Health, Education, Labor, and Pensions. As you can tell by the title, it's a lot. So we have Chairman Bernie Sanders, an independent from Vermont, and the lead Republican ranking member, Dr. Bill Cassidy, Republican from Louisiana. Very fortunate to have our newest U.S. Senator Ted Budd, a Republican, as a member of this committee, picking up the torch that was left with Senator Burr in his departure from the U.S. Senate. So jurisdiction of this committee is quite robust. Again, you can tell by the title. Looking at this public health, on the public health lens of this, the jurisdiction includes agencies, institutes, programs, a part of the Department of Health and Human Services. You have the FDA, you have the CDC, and of course, you have the National Institutes of Health. On the education side, we have jurisdiction, it has jurisdiction, obviously, over education and workforce issues. Head Start, No Child Left Behind Act, Higher Education, Arts and Humanities, and of course, student financial aid and assistance. So for this year, this Congress, this committee has been primarily focused on public health issues and biomedical research. As you can see from the hearings list, I just cherry picked a few. As you can see from the hearings list, I just cherry-picked a few. Notable one being, we had in December, the Diabetes Epidemic Hearing, and one of our own Gilling's researchers was there to present and testify on her work and research into food labeling. So again, a great opportunity for Carolina research on the national stage. But you can also see the focus is also on the National Institutes of Health. So NIH reform continues to be very much a focus of this committee, particularly for ranking member Cassidy, who is a M.D. himself. He just recently released a white paper that is outlining reforms, and it's titled, NIH in the 21st Century Ensuring Transparency and American Biomedical Leadership. And this followed a request for information that he issued back in the fall from stakeholders, which various universities and, you know, other associations throughout the country submitted feedback. We also were able to address these through Senator Budd's office as well. Several concerns around NIH's grant funding priorities, exactly directing funding away from early-stage research in favor to support more late-stage research. Cassidy also lays out several proposals ranging from streamlining the peer review of research and then addressing challenges that we currently are facing in recruiting and maintaining our biomedical workforce. So a lot of important things that we, as a university and federal affairs, will continue to monitor and engage on as this NIH reform modernization effort is underway. Legislation, just again, want to highlight, not a lot on the education space, very much healthcare biomedical-focused. Two bills that I wanted to point out, the first being the Bipartisan Primary Care and Health Workforce Act that was passed out of committee this past fall. It's a lot in this bill. Basically, it reauthorizes several important programs for our graduate students and professional students here at UNC, one of them being the Graduate Medical Education Program, which provided additional funding, think close to 700 new primary care residency slots. Again, this is for underserved and rural areas, which UNC Chapel Hill, our graduates benefit from. Then we have the National Health Service Corps. Again, this encompasses dental, mental health, medical providers, graduates from our professional programs. And it included the Nurse Education Practice Quality and Retention Program. So again, it's something really important for our nursing program. It authorizes all of these programs through fiscal year '28, and these funds will be allocated once appropriated to colleges and universities. The last one on the screen is the Advancing Research in Education Act. This is the only substantive education bill that was passed out of committee. And why this is important, this is the first-ever authorization of the Education Sciences Reform Act. This is a two-decade-old law. It basically established the Department of Ed, Education's Independent Research Agency, and this is the Institute for Education Sciences, IES. Why is this important? Well, UNC Chapel Hill, we are one of the top-funded institutes, institutions that receive IES funding to conduct education research. So just a snapshot of what's happening in the Senate Help Committee, not an exhausting list at all, but, you know, with a few more months to go in this Congress, I'm sure we will be seeing more activity coming out of this committee. Switching gears over to the House side, House Committee on Education and the Workforce, a name and a face that is very familiar to many of us in this room. Dr. Virginia Fox is the current chairwoman of the committee. Interesting fact, she had received a waiver from leadership at the start of this Congress to continue her chairwomanship, but regardless of the outcomes with the election, if Republicans do maintain a majority, this is her last go at the chairwoman, and she's already announced that. So anybody that knows Dr. Fox knows that she's a determined lady, and she likes to stay busy, and so that's what she's been doing. And so I'm excited to tell you a little bit more about what she's been up to. And she, her teammate is ranking member Bobby Scott, a Democrat from Virginia. North Carolina, we have two members of our House delegation that sit on this committee. We have Democrat Dr. Alma Adams representing the 12th District, and then we, of course, have Kathy Manning representing the 6th District. So as I said, very busy committee, very higher ed-focused. Just a few examples of some of the hearings that listed. As you can see, it focuses on foreign influence, affordability, accessibility, DEI issues, FAFSA. Many of us have seen the high-profile hearings that brought in college administrators, continue to have oversight over the Department of Education policies, regulations, and implementation there. Our very own Rachel Feldman, Vice Provost, recently testified before this committee back in April, discussing the failed rollout of the FAFSA, Simplified FAFSA. So again, it's really great to have a leadership from UNC Chapel Hill on the congressional stage for this. So legislation, you know, Dr. Fox's approach, she gonna take the bull by the horns and she's gonna go. And so as a reminder, the Higher Education Act, I think we've touched on this before, but it is a massive piece of legislation, authorizes numerous programs, federal aid that support our students, but also institutions of higher education as well, comprised of multiple titles. We all know that Title IV, you know, it authorizes all of the major student aid programs. The last time the HEA was comprehensively reauthorized was 2008. So it's been quite a while since these programs have, yeah, been refined. So there's been several failed attempts over the years to reauthorize this, which that's for a later update. But understanding, Dr. Fox understood that she would not be able to have a comprehensive reauthorization of the HEA, and so she's now chosen to do a very much a piecemeal approach. Two good examples here I have on the legislation, the first being the Deterrent Act. Bear with me on this, the Defending Education Transparency and Ending Rogue Regimes Engaging in Nefarious Transactions Act. Mouthful. It's a lot in this bill. It's a lot. Basically, in a nutshell, it aims to improve transparency, accountability for foreign gift reporting and requirements for colleges and university. This bill also aims to deter foreign actors and rebuild trust within U.S. higher education learning, per Virginia Fox. Legislation centers around the Section 117 of the Higher Education Act. Currently, we, UNC Chapel Hill and any other institute or, you know, institutions of higher learning that receive federal support and aid, must disclose to the Department of Education reports containing information about gifts or contracts of at least $250,000 that we've received from or entered into with any foreign source. So that's 250 that we have to report twice a year to the department. This bill would lower that. It would lower that reporting threshold from 250,000 to 50,000, except for gifts received from foreign countries of concern. That would have a $0 threshold. The countries of concern, of course, the People's Republic of China, Iran, North Korea, Russia, and Saudi Arabia. Additionally, some other, some notable provisions would require institutions to report the name of the individual, the department, or the benefactor at that institution receiving the gift. Currently, it's just the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill receives X amount of dollars from this, this country. So that would be a new update to the requirement. Also would require faculty and certain staff engaged in research and development to annually report gifts at or over the amount, at or over the amount included in the Foreign Gifts and Decorations Act, which is a threshold set at $480. So faculty, staff would have to report anything above that. And then contracts. This would have to require the Department of Ed approval for any contracts at 5,000 or more with any country of concern. This legislation passed out of the House. So it passed out of committee, went to the House floor, passed out of it in early December, and so now it's made its way over to the Senate. Senator Tom Tillis, our senior senator, is the lead senator on the companion legislation in the Senate there. We, UNC Federal Affairs, continue to have very productive, thoughtful conversations with Senator Tillis and his staff on this to refine the legislation, but the possibility of this getting much traction this year, rather slim. And the last one, the College Cost Reduction Act. So this has really been Chairwoman Fox's baby. She introduced this legislation in January of this year. The measure was quickly marked up and voted out of full committee in February. This is like a 600-page bill. I mean, it's humongous. There's a lot in here. Several legislative proposals that have already been introduced by Republican members of Congress are included in this. So very high-level summary, notable provisions. First, the title is Transparency, you know, seeks to address college costs and the financial value of the programs offered on campus. So this creates, establishes a new risk-sharing formula that will basically hold colleges responsible for a portion of unpaid student debt if students can't repay. In a nutshell, the formula is based on the median earnings of graduates after graduating minus a multiple of the poverty line, sorry, multiple of the poverty line divided by the price paid for the degree. Y'all got that? Okay. So the bill, colleges and universities are required to make annual risk-sharing payments based on the non-repayment balance of the student cohorts. And so the cohorts are broken up into three types. You have completing, undergraduate, non-completing, and graduate non-completion. It requires the institutes of higher education to adhere to a standard format and terminology for financial aid award and offer letters, and also accreditation reforms, a lot in here, language to make it easier for institutions to switch accreditors when required to do so under a state law. Also, new language that requires accreditors to respect institutions' religious missions and creates an appeal process for institutions who believe they have been subject to adverse accreditor action because of their religious missions. So that's just a snapshot where we stand on this. It passed out of committee. It's waiting for a House floor vote, not really sure where that's gonna go, but even if it does pass out of the House, the likelihood of the Senate taking this up, given that it's, they're under Democratic leadership, quite slim. So thank y'all for bearing with me with that update. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Did you have one? Oh, sorry, okay. Okay, today, okay. All right, our last informational item is to hear an update from Mike Andreessen, Vice Chancellor for Development.
Many Chair White, board trustees, thank you for having me. At the end of the day, I am cognizant that I am the last speaker between you joining Professor Charakles at a bar somewhere in Chapel Hill. Did I get that right? So I've sent you a pack in advance, and I'll go over it briefly, and you can review it, and we have questions afterwards. As is our standard practice, we share data on our progress for fundraising. I reported at the last meeting that fundraising was down a bit, but I was confident that the second half of the year would, in fact, show some positive results, and we're seeing that. We are at 253 million as of the end of the third quarter, March 31st. And you'll note again that I'm adding the non-conforming total, which is an additional 38 million that we used to count. And so when you're comparing last year and the five-year average, you should combine those two numbers in comparison. More importantly, I will tell you, I looked at the data as of last week. We have now surpassed 318 million for the year, and I think as of this week, we're beyond that, including 63 million in non-conforming gifts. And we can discuss those again if you'd like, but I think the point here is we're seeing a stronger second half emerge, and I'm quite delighted with that. Want to shout out to some of our units that are doing particularly well. As I said, everyone was down, but we're seeing those in green that are having an exceptional year. Many are making progress. I won't go through all of these. You have them in front of you, and if you have questions, you can certainly ask. As we always do, we look at cash, and I think that's reflective. Cash is a lagging indicator, but we know that many of our gifts are outright gifts, but others are over time, and those, of course, are deferred, would not be reflective here. We had a very successful UNC Give Day, a Give UNC Day. You got all the emails. We had a little fun with that last time, but $8 million was raised on that 24-hour period, and 12,000 gifts and 9,000 donors. The purpose of this entire day is to identify and generate new donors to our donor community, and we're seeing strong momentum. So I'm gonna pivot a bit. We have been talking about at the last several meetings through the post-campaign, and what are we learning and what are we focusing our energy as we prepare for the next major fundraising effort? This is a slide that I asked for at the first of the year and got it sometime in February. As of the middle of March, this was our best guess of what was coming down the pike, and that is simply talking to donors, asking them, when do you think you might make a gift and at what size? And you all are donors, so you've had that discussion before. And then beginning to calibrate, what does the pipeline look like? And one thing you'll notice that caught our attention is we were very heavy in the current year, and really not thinking about, well, what about the donor that says, I think I'm two years out or three years out? Are we developing strategies and ongoing conversations to support that work? I think it's an indication of the last campaign. We were, sort of the end of the last campaign, we were so focused to get to the end, that we were very near-term attentive, if you will. And so we have been going back to all of our fundraisers and all the, you know, it's an ask the question, of course, what are you doing now? But have you begun to think about the next two or three years? Can you quantify that in some way? And so in a very short order, and we are just beginning this work, this is what that chart looks like today. It turns out, folks had in mind future conversations, but hadn't quantified it or written it down or given it to us to analyze. The next time I show you this chart, I'm quite confident you'll be even more impressed with the dramatic. And so I want to thank Jeff Hill and our Associate Vice Chancellor for Campaign Planning. He and the team are driving this. Obviously, Chantel is working with our school and colleges, but I'm just really encouraged to see that we're beginning to move past the near term and think about the sustainable long term. To that end, we have been planning for the next campaign. I mentioned at our last meeting that we began in September with all of our deans and our vice chancellors and leadership on campus that actively participate in fundraising. And we did a baseline of where's higher education? And we spent higher education fundraising at this moment, we spent about a half-day together. Then in November, we spent a day and a half with each dean and their development officer talking about the art of the ask. How do you actually do that? And how do you sit down and have those conversations? In February, we met with our campaign consultants and all of the deans for another half-day about why have a campaign? What are the elements of a campaign that are helpful? And then this last week, we began the charge on May 7th, which is the homework we now want them to do, all of our units collectively, to begin to develop a set of priorities among a common themes that we can collectively raise money over a period of years. You should expect next fall that they'll begin to think about drafting those presentations and testing them internally. Then in February of next year, we'll begin doing some external conversations with volunteers through the end of the spring. We'll do that both with the leadership team and then with our various boards and volunteer groups. This is all in preparation for identifying intentional philanthropy, not just raising money because we can, but we're aligning ourselves with a set of key themes and objectives. We've also been updating our metrics. What does that mean? We do evaluate each individual fundraiser performance. We set goals. They set goals, we set goals. We then evaluate throughout the year, and at the end of the year, when we do the annual review, we ask, how did you do? And it's not just how much money did you raise, it's how much activity did you have? We're updating those metrics and not prepared to share them with you today, but happy to do so in the future, looking at best practice and looking at the data from the last campaign. Also, continue to work on data, dataset and tools. Our database is at the last of its typical life shelf, our warehouse. Seven to eight years is kind of where we are. We're in year, I think, seven. You would typically replace that database in advance the next campaign. That is a very expensive endeavor, so we're looking at options about whether this is the right moment to make that kind of investment. We will have to do it at some point. The tools and technologies will require us to do that. We're also building, and I was great to see Veronica here earlier today, we're building a lot, new collaborations with the Carolina alumni, our GAA, finding ways to more consistently engage alumni, no matter where they are and what they're interested in doing. We are doing a major overhaul internally about our global fundraising efforts and our We are doing a major overhaul internally about our global fundraising efforts and our regional fundraising team to ask the question, are we in the right regions and are we engaging enough of alumni in the right regions? You know that I, we hired, we talked about developing a new set of strategic initiatives. These are kind of moonshot ideas or campus wide strategies that live beyond any school or college. Lucia Coffin was hired as our Associate Vice Chancellor to lead that effort. Very pleased to tell you, she has now successfully hired a senior fundraiser for the School of Data Science and Society, a senior fundraiser experienced for capital renewal, that is that deferred maintenance, we like to call it capital renewal. But and thinking about how philanthropy can help us with that and working with Dedrick Carter, Vice Chancellor for Innovation and Commercialization. Where can philanthropy intersect in that, that work as well? Also working with our Vice Chancellor for Research as well. Finally, Chantel was able to add a second fundraiser to work with the 26 units. We have now three people spread across the 26, 26 units on campus. On Monday, the Chancellor and I had a chance to have lunch with Steve Israel. And I just want to call out an incredible gift of $10 million from one of our own, who is deeply passionate for the humanities and liberal arts. Trustee Jones, thank you for the introduction to him in the fall. We are now off and running to leverage this gift to inspire so many other donors to join him. And he is going to be a champion along with our dean, Jim White, in the College of Arts and Sciences, to really elevate this opportunity for giving. We also had a wonderful gift to continue our, from the Kena Trust, Chapel Trust Foundation to support our active research and activity in the Glacopos Island Islands. We'll be sending more students and research faculty down there. Just delighted. We intend to also join additional donors in this effort. Many of you were here for the topping off. I was a little worried about that big beam and where it was gonna land, but it was Stephen Bell Hall and just great to see the philanthropic role and incredible state investment in our new undergraduate business education building. And finally, again, thanks to Chair Trustee Pryor, who came to the Massey Awards. We had a wonderful lunch. This is a gift that has been around for almost 30 years, but it does such a special thing. Elevates and lifts those employees and staff that don't always get seen. And I just wanted to share their faces and their names. It's a point of pride for all of us. That's my report.
Thank you. And does anyone have any questions for Mike? I'll just say thank you for thinking about the campaign planning and anticipation of that with updated metrics. Would it be a good idea at some point to maybe have like an orientation for us, just of all things development? Because I know you've worked really hard at restructuring a little bit, how it works.
I would be great.
Appreciate it. Okay, I think that is all we have for open session. Trustee Valentine, I will now entertain a motion to go into closed.
Madam Chair, I move that the External Relations Committee go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Sections 143, 318.11, A12, prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential information, and also pursuant to Section 143, 318.11, A2.
Okay, you've heard the motion to have a second? Any discussion or debate? All those who face say aye. All right, motion carries. We're in closed. All right, we are back into open session. And that concludes our business for today, so we will adjourn without objection.